Meeting for December ninth, 2025. It's exactly 6:00 PM. Ms. Devon, we have a quorum. Mr. Chulowitz is not present this evening. With that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would please make sure all of your phones are on silent or vibrate. That would be most helpful so we're not interrupted. And if you would please stand for the invocation. And I pledge allegiance to Mr. Donaldson. Would you please give the invocation?
Heavenly God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Father, that we do what's right and just and fair for the citizens of Montgomery. And Father, we lift up Councilmember Tom tonight. Father, since he is recovering, Father, from an attack on his body. Father, we thank you, Father, that his body, we call it healed and we call him back to work in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag, which will be on your TV screen to the north. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now to the Texas flag behind us. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. All right. First item on our agenda is the public forum. We have quite a few this evening. As a reminder, we called up as you signed in. You have three minutes to speak. Mr. Donaldson, are you keeping the time? You typically do. Okay. And just as a reminder too, this is not for discussion, but we are open to your comments. And don't expect anybody to comment back because we are here to hear your comments this evening. So with that, the first speaker request form I have is from Cheryl Fox. Please state your name and address, please.
Do you want me to go ahead?
You can do it here if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Fox. I live in East Stewart Street here in Montgomery. I'm here since 1975. And I want me to just tell everybody publicly what a great job our public, our against person has done. Stephanie Johnson has put us on so much that my whole church really knows where Montgomery, the city of Montgomery is. They know it's not a county. They know the city of Montgomery. She has done so many little things, especially at night to really, and all the lighting has just done a great thing. And Stephanie, you have done such a great job of putting it out in the public that I have now celebrity at my church.
If I may, I'd like to echo a great job on the new Facebook page and all of the content you're putting out. I too am getting a lot of compliments and great job at Light of the Park last Saturday. A lot of people, the most we probably have ever had. They served over 400 hot chocolate cocos right here at Cedar Creek Park. We're just between 600 and 800 people, so great job. Next up, Mr. LaFèt. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Nice to see you again. Philip LaFèt, 898 Club. I want to give my input on the status of litigation between me and the city of Montgomery. I think the litigation started when Mr. Palmer retaliated against my public criticism of him and public comment of City Council. I thought the litigation would go away after Mr. Palmer was fired for misrepresenting things at City Council. Clearly did not, as the city subsequently sent a demand letter for me for 2.3 million and then increased that to 17 million after we filed a counterclaim for 4.3 million for things that took place 20 years ago and which they never previously had taken issue with. In their lawsuit, the city provided no evidence to back up their claim. It seems as if they're relying on finding their course of action from documents that we were asked to produce. We had always regarded the city as a partner in developing the city, so we've never considered suing in a lawsuit because the removal of the statute of limitation allowed us to count a suit once we were sued. It was also because the city, we sued the city, but not following a contractual agreement on drainage, which cost us a lot of money. We also sued the city on their default of a 380 agreement. There's nothing worse than the city asking for somebody to do something. They do it, they pay for it, and then the city refuses to pay. That, to me, is equivalent to theft. As a, we, I'm sorry. The lawsuits both parties filed were for summary judgment. The court rejected the city's motions entirely and dismissed their case. The city has enjoyed considerable benefit from limited limitations because of the sovereign immunity, protection from the city. But that's going away now, and there's no real sovereign immunity for contractual breach of contract and theft. In our case, this, against the city, the court sided with us and immediately set for jury trial. This prompted the city to file an appeal to avoid the trial. It's probably smart because the one witness the city was producing is somebody that you guys have called a liar in public. It doesn't make much sense producing a witness who you think is a liar. It's probably, I'm missing, I didn't bring my glasses. In summary, the city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to sue us. They're likely to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars more because they're appealing a judgment they already lost, and it's a total waste of money. If the city had just been honorable from the beginning and that we were the sort of this, we tried to meet with the city for three years and you haven't heard us once, haven't been prepared to discuss something, all you basically wanted was to file a lawsuit and you were going to pick our pockets. And this has come back to bite you. This is at a time when you try to sell $26 million worth of bonds. And you need to report the potential liability of 4.3 million, even if you're going to win, because that's a potential issue against your credit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Krishna Chandrakson. I'm sorry if I shoved that up.
Last thing, I speak as well.
Okay. If you please stick your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Krishna Chandrakson. I come in 15th Ridge Trail in Magnolia. Thank you, Madam Councilman and the entire City Council. I'm here today to discuss the issues and concerns about AI data centers and my comment and requested urges to oppose all constructions of any AI data centers in Montgomery County and whatever action we in the City Council can take to do that, whether it's denying the, you know, construction permits, certificates of occupancy, you know, things of that nature. And there are a lot of reasons why we need to oppose this, but I think one thing that we all can agree on, you know, regardless of whatever party affiliation, is that water is a very valuable resource that every one of us needs, especially in this county, which is only growing in population. And these AI data centers are bringing up a good chunk of the water. So if these AI data centers are allowed to pass and be constructed fully, then we could very well see ourselves being told that we cannot have showers in the very hot summers, our children cannot have water, and that's also going to affect our farmers if they don't have enough water to produce food that we all need to eat because it's being gobbled up by these AI data centers. I also want all of you to imagine like these AI data centers, these big things in your backyard, creating a lot of noise and disturbance, making it hard for you and your children to sleep. And so, again, the good thing is that we are still kind of early in this. And as far as I research, Montgomery County has not yet been, it has yet been invaded and infected with the AI data centers, which unfortunately I can't say for lots of other counties out there. So that's why I'm urging us to be proactive in this measure and to make this a priority, to oppose these moving AI data center constructions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Carl Barash, please.
Hello, my name is Carl Barash, Level 3, Oakley Mason Street. And I'm here in Garden District, Number 6. The community center is the center of Old Montgomery where the half Montgomery sidewalk is located, founded in 1837. The Montgomery County Jail is located in this property. This is the form of the store for the city of Montgomery. Montgomery County built three of these types of one community buildings and we gave them one to a city, and that's Montgomery. The only two, the other two are Ian Willis and Magnolia, and they're still being operated to date with no really current issue going on with the buildings. For many years, the citizens of Montgomery had celebrated many functions within the community center walls. Our citizens celebrated New Year's, Thanksgiving, July Fours parade, Old West festivals, so people that's been here for a while, Christmas parades, cookie walks, Easter celebrations, even have courthouse in there, and many elections from long time ago. The history of family and community events was celebrated to create long lasting memories for our citizens. Our past mayor and the City Council members worked very hard building these structures and then creating an historical district to preserve. Our own citizen TJ Pill was a county submission at the time and was instrumental in having the building donated to the city of Montgomery for future use, not to be torn down. History has its marks on family value and architectures in Montgomery. This building is rich of our family functions and architecture history and should not be torn down. What's wrong with the building? Is it too old? Are there stones? Is this cold? I'm not sure why people dislike it. Are there, is it mold? Is there leaking issue? Well, I can venture to say that fixing these issues can be a whole lot cheaper than tearing the building down and construction doing. I've heard many comments from city employees, or about city employees, let me change that, that this building has no historical value, which is a crying shame to hear from those comments from our city employees, that our city prides itself on historical preservation. You know, I live across the street from this building and I'm always out in my yard working, saying hi to people as they walk by and greeting people from Michigan, New York. Everybody walks through that area. And I can tell you how many times I call them fellow Americans, because they are from other states, tell me how much they enjoy our smart town charm, atmosphere, and conversation. After a conversation of the good old days when they were leaving, they always tell me, keep this time capsule the same. Do not let people come in and change it. You have a dime in there. This is a historical building, Empire Towne, where we come, sir.
Mr. Barash. Next up, Ms. Hillary Dumas.
Good evening. How much you enjoyed my attachments last time? So I brought some of these stuff. Good evening. My name is Hillary Dumas, 8560 Majestic Lakeport, Montgomery, Texas, 77356. I'd like to talk about a small portion of what the city has spent creating arguments that have been continually dismissed. In the first handout that I gave you, you'll find the city exhibit to the court last week detailing $75,000 in legal fees associated with defending just our small counterclaims. There's also an estimate for the appeal and the support costs in case you're interested in what you're about to spend. More astounding is actually the 35 redacted black pages reflecting your additional legal costs associated with the original dismissed lawsuit. I'm really cheap, and so I didn't print black pages, but there are 35 pages here that are just solid black of your original lawsuit costs. Perhaps the city should have considered using a small portion of these ridiculous legal fees to simply honor its $148,000 380 agreement. Instead, despite years of us asking with promises of a will look into it, we were never reimbursed a dime. Last January, I sent an email to interim staff and all of City Council outlining eight open items that we had been unable to get Gary Palmer or McCourt Fidel to address for several years. Almost a year later, not one of these items has been discussed or resolved. That's your second attachment. Instead of being a partner or following the legal contract signed, the city signed, the city has ignored this debt. According to your outside counsel, we should have filed suit prior to August 2024. We didn't because we naively believed the city was honorable and true to its word. In addition to seeking bond, you're raising utility rates significantly in a questionable economy. Yet in the last year, you voted to pay Ken DeKeese almost $300,000 to land plan private property, among other things, two tracts, one of which was ours and already had a professional land plan from LJA. The other tract simply opted out of the city and the ETJ completely. Definitely money well spent. Then we have the excellent due diligence associated with the $993,000 purchase of the Knight Inspection Building that now no one wants. It's apparently worth significantly less than you paid. Its highest combust use is likely as a teardown to period parking for downtown. Instead, rumor has it, you're trying to pawn it off on anything to dispose of. Finally, let's delve into the WGA bills of late. The city will obviously have astronomical costs associated with the expert testimony of the city engineer for the aforementioned dismissed lawsuit. But what about the expenses associated with paying WGA for feasibility studies and designs of other city projects? What about the obvious conflict of interest of WGA reviewing and approving their own plans? It's like a blank checkbook for WGA. It's way past time for the city to have its own engineer. Expand the role to professionalize public works and we might be on to something productive, perhaps even see some cost savings. You're stewards of the taxpayers and city funds, and although the city has clearly shown it's no longer a trusted partner in development, perhaps consideration should be taken for the taxpayers and how you spend other people's money.
Next up, Mr. Larry Forrester.
Mayor and Council.
Long time no see.
I come in here and feel like it's hometown week. I served as the city attorney, for those that don't know, I served as the city attorney before Allen came along and it's a pleasure to be here. I'm coming in my capacity as the chairman of the Montgomery County Historical Commission. And I understand that the, there has been a proposal to demolish the community center. And I'm here to suggest that we feel that, I can't speak for everybody in the commission because this just seemed to my attention yesterday, but I do believe that our commission may be able to provide some support for you in terms of funding and other resources. So that you understand, our historical commission is an arm of Montgomery County itself. I and our commissioners, our volunteers, serve at the direction of the county judge and the commissioners, and we also report back to the Texas Historical Commission. There are a number of grants that are available through the Texas Historical Commission, through the Texas Historical Foundation. We are a county that's a certified local government county, so there's grants there and so forth. These grants could run up to $15,000 and possibly, possibly more in some cases. If there's a way to preserve the building, because it was, it was actually built in 1840, or 1948, it just happened to be the year I was born. So it's about 77 years old. It was dedicated to the memory of the men who served in World War II. And it's had, as Carl mentioned, it's had a multitude of uses over the years. And it's to the old timers here, and I don't live here, I live in Conroe, but to the old timers here, it has been a precious feature in the history and heritage of Montgomery County. And I realize, of course, that there's been a lot of due diligence done on the, what's going to cost to repair the building and so forth. But the building, in my judgment, would qualify for a state historical marker. And so, it would be tragic if efforts weren't made to see it and say, I can't, I can't say whether it can be or not. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that it can, because I don't know the condition of the building. And there are people like Mike Muckleroy and others who've done a lot of due diligence, and I respect their judgment on this. But if there's any way that our historical commission could assist the city in doing this, and I might even add, our commissioners for get us money for preservation purposes. We've, we've given money for the Furman Park, we've given money for a number of old structures that the Montgomery Historical Society owns and needs to keep up. So currently, we're working with the Lutheran Church on the preservation of the first Old First Baptist Church and providing a lot of guidance. We have volunteers that are site, that are site engineers, that are structural engineers that at their own, we volunteer their time to come and look at the building and maybe give ideas. If there's any way we could repurpose the building and save it, I'd be available and happy to help you work through that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Scott Carson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff and audience members. Thank you all for the opportunity to come and speak today. My name is Scott Carson. I'm running for Justice of the Peace, Precedent One, here in Montgomery County. For those of you who may have not heard or turned Justice of the Peace Judge Wayne Mack, he is now re-running for that spot. So at this point, it's an open seat. I feel like I have the qualifications, the credentials and just life experience to fill that role. Although there may be big shoes to fill, I feel like I've been good for that spot. I did not come to this decision lightly. I've heard the Romans and Judge Mack, as I've been re-running for about six months. I did my due diligence. I did some research, I talked to community members, friends, family, elected officials, faith leaders, and make sure that this is going to be the right move for me, my family and my community. After a lot of encouragement and support and a lot of conversation with my wife, we decided to take that leap of faith. And so here I am, taking this leap of faith and treading deep waters to be our next Justice of the Peace here, Precedent One. I'm a lifelong Willis resident. Grew up there my whole life, kindergarten through 12th grade, married my high school sweetheart. We've been together since her sophomore year, my junior year. We have two boys in the school this year currently, a 17-year-old senior and a 14-year-old ninth grader who we homeschool. He has high functioning autism and we just felt like it was best for him and the situation to pull him out of public school, homeschool him. That was kind of awkward for me because I've been served on the school board for Willis ISD and I'm a proponent of public schools, but again, I was going to do what was best for my child. My, my experience on the school board, I think, will serve me well in the Justice of the Peace role as well. Some things that I would like to do is develop better programs for truancy in our school districts through the Justice of the Peace Courts. As you know, school districts get funding through their average daily attendance, and that's falling down the wayside. I believe in holding parents accountable. My opinion, this is just my personal opinion, but too many parents want to be their kid's friend instead of being their kid's parent. So I feel like if we can hold them accountable a little bit more stringently, then they'd be more apt to have those students in school to avoid a lot of this truancy issues. So some of my background includes law enforcement. I worked for the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office from 2007 to 2012 under Sheriff Tommy Gage on patrol. I left in 2012 to get on a better family schedule of life for me and my family. My wife's a registered nurse, she's been in nursing administration now for 25 years. She was working day shift, I was working night shift, there was just a revolving door. So I left to get on a better schedule for the family life. Fast forward 13 years and I'm now back at the sheriff's office working for our current sheriff, Wesley Doolittle, in a civilian role and pursuing, pursuing these political aspirations. So I just wanted to extend an invitation to everybody. I'm, I'm more than willing to engage with anybody and sit down and have a conversation with anybody. That's, that's my job as a candidate, and I hope anybody will be open to sit down with me and have a discussion. I'm going to stick around for the meeting and I'll have a card I can pass out and speak to anybody. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Mary Lee Thompson.
Good evening, good evening, Council. My name is Mary Lee Thompson, and I reside at 25637 West Avenue, 1097 Road, Montgomery, Texas. I'm here to speak about my property at 914 College Street, the same. I'm standing before the council to present evidence of discriminatory treatment and handle of my permits and their approvals by the city of Montgomery. Property in question is located at 914 College Street, within the Historic Preservation District in the city of Montgomery. It is governed by the Design Guidelines for the Residential and Cultural Structures, which were established to preserve architectural continuity and ensure conformance with the style, form, sales, materials, color, and details of buildings constructed between 1830 and 1941. First, the age of my home is unknown. The structure was moved onto the property at some point in the past, but the date of the move and the home's actual age have never been disclosed. I personally owned the property for over 25 years. When I remodeled this home and added a garage, I was required to obtain two separate permits, one for the remodeling work and one for the addition of the garage. I followed all the procedures required under Section 98-347 of the Code of Ornaments, which states on page 3 of 7, no person shall carry out any exterior construction, reconstruction, alteration, restoration, rehabilitation, demolition, or relocation of any historic landmark or any property within an historic preservation district, nor shall a person make any material change to other exterior elements visible from a public right of way, which will affect the appearance and cohesiveness of any historic landmark or buildings or structures moved onto a property within an historic preservation district or on the property designated as a historic landmark, will be subject to an importance with the Design Guidelines, excuse me, Design Guidelines for the city. I appeared before the PNC Commission and subsequent one before this council for permission for the work to be performed and was properly granted. Before beginning the remodel, I was informed that because the home was being remodeled rather than newly constructed, the city was concerned only with the exterior work and the interior work would not fall under permit requirements. The Design Guidelines themselves support this. Under General Information Guidelines, state, the interior of period buildings may be altered at the discretion of the owner, but any repair, alteration, condition, replacement, removal, or reconstruction of all or part of the exterior must be done in accordance with the requirements contained herein and upon receipt of approval from the PNC Commission. Also of note, the city has no written application process or information specific to remodeling work to be performed within the city limits or the historic district. However, shortly after the beginning of the remodel, I was told by both the city and the inspector, I was required to obtain inspections on interior framing, fire and electric, the work, HVAC work, none of which are requirements reflected in the guidelines. However, there are other properties that are being handled without permits. You're allowing them, the code enforcement lady is aware of them, and I was told that she can't enforce them because they didn't pull permits. Well, basically, the city guidelines read, no person shall carry out any exterior construction, reconstruction, not some people, not only persons who pull permits, all persons performing exterior work must comply. So my question is going to be, since the city has not applied its own rules uniformly, how do we make this right? The city should either require it to work in violation to be permitted and corrected to meet all permitting and guideline requirements on neighboring properties, just as I was required to do, or provide me reimbursement for the permit expenses, reinspection fees, and work that I should not have been required to perform. Specifically, permits for my contractors were required to secure for interior work, which is not mandated to meet permits yet in version, which is the cost I absorb, and the cost to correct the work on my hand railing and spindles, inclusive of reinspection fees and labor materials to resolve the inspection citation, to be able to receive my certificate of occupancy. The city has not applied its own rules uniformly. If the city demands compliance from one resident, it must demand compliance from all. The process of working with the city has been inconsistent, onerous, unnecessarily unpleasant. The city has a responsibility to act fairly and justly, uphold its standards, and resolve actions and issues within the city in an equitable manner. It is my hope the city will prioritize correcting the issues I have presented today in a timely and ethical manner and that I am appropriately advised of the city's courses of remedy and action. Thank you.
Thank you. All news. Okay. Consent agenda, item number four. Consideration of possible action on the City Council regular meeting minutes of November 10th, 2025. Number five. Consideration of possible action on the following resolution. A resolution of the city of Montgomery, Texas, affirming its annual review of the policy for investment of municipal funds and the investment strategies contained therein has been conducted as required by Section 2256.05005E of the Texas Government Code. Council, would you like to take these individually or cumulatively? What is your pleasure?
Cumulative.
I'll, I'll hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Olson, do we accept the consent agenda? Second by Ms. Fox. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, say aye. I was supposed to say nay, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and we'll accept the consent agenda as presented. Item number six on your agenda, under regular agenda. Consideration of possible action regarding the community center.
As you heard, I brought this because the EDC, you know, decided in the whole scheme of the project down there that it would make more sense to remove that building and build a new building with bigger square foot. It was unanimous among them, so I had to bring it to you guys. The project it to you guys. The project can move in many directions, but we just need, you know, a decision, if you will, on how to move forward with that, where we spend all the time designing and doing all the things that we need to do.
Well, based on Mr. Forrester's presentation, and I spoke to some people that have lived here a long time and legacy individuals, I didn't realize personally the historical importance of that building and that site. So I was a proponent of redoing it, using same materials, because there is some problems inside of it, without a doubt. It needs some attention. But actually learning the historical parts and pieces to it, and there's only three of them, and it was to honor world to world, two veterans, I'm of the least invasive, but most productive restructuring, whatever that is, facelifting, whatever that is. But I do know that...
Yeah, the option on that, and we did discuss that, is to gut the entire thing. So there's nothing inside.
Not change the footprint?
No, it's about 800 square foot, and that was the conversation. It's really hardly usable space if you want to have events and different things in that space. So if you're going to keep the building there, it's dead center in the middle of that property, it's just going to be what it is. Unless you knock out a side of it and build on to it that way, but then you're still centered in the building. And the plan, at least from the EDC's point of view, was to move the building more to the north towards gyms, open up the front of that, you know, create some space for music, stage, those kind of things. And we did look at the historic, and most of the historic things are not that building. They're the things that happened before that building. I mean, there's some, you know, attachment to that building, but it's mostly things that happened on that location. And I, me personally, I don't care which way it is. You know, you can save the cornerstones. You can reuse some of the, you know, if you tear it down and start over, but the honest truth is, it's in pretty sad shape. It's just because nothing ever was done. The metal roof that's on it is built right on top of a wood roof that just hides the wood roof. It's pretty much rotted there. You can see that all the drop ceiling's falling. So if you do anything to it, you're going to have to start from scratch. You're just really going to have to tear it all out. The bathrooms are too small to be ADA compliant. The kitchen's too small to do anything in. It just is what it is. I mean, it looks cool. Yes, I agree. But and that's the problem with the building is, okay, in a perfect world, we rebuild it, but we're going to rebuild it from scratch because it is that bad a shape. So the limestone has leaked through the walls, and all the studs are bad. The building has to be torn down and rebuilt.
Can we see that report?
Yeah.
Can we see that report?
Yeah, he has it all. He crawled around in it. He crawled around in the ceiling of it to try to understand what the contractors were looking around. So our problem is...
I think though that it's going to be...
If we rebuild the building, I mean, to try to remodel it, to bring it up to spec, we're going to tear it down and rebuild. Either way, it's got to be torn down to nothing, basically, and built right back up.
Well, my opinion is that we should table this until further information. I think it has historic value. I know that most people don't, but I do. To my family, it has historic value. I'll go back and ask everybody.
I'm not arguing any historical value. I'm arguing the fact that you can't save a building. It's just the bones aren't there to save.
Again, I'd like to table this issue until further discussion.
Are you making a motion?
Aye.
A motion by Ms. Fox to table item number six on the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donaldson. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires a mandatory vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of tabling item number six, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will table item number six on the agenda.
What is it? Go ahead. I didn't mean to stop you. But give me direction, exactly what you want. I mean, I have everything.
Do you want to field trip there so we can see it? Because we don't know, like, I've been inside there.
It's $60,000 to do the mold remediation. It's $200,000 minimal to even get it back to, you know...
I understand what you're talking about. First of all, one of my concerns is, where is the money coming from? Is the EDC paying for this? Does they decide against it?
Yes.
I was told that EDC would not pay for it.
No, based off of the new design of the downtown developments, it was...
EDC is paying for it. Yes, I would like a tour, and I'd like to audit our presentation now.
Item number seven on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on municipal complex.
Thanks for having me again. Thank you to see you guys. So a long time no see.
Long time no see.
So basically, what's before you is the scope of Architectural Services and Engineering. It's a proposal to keep the project moving forward. As you know, the last time I was down here, you approved the conceptual design phase. Per the workshop that we had, we're wrapping that up. So this is just a proposal. This is an actionable item to allow Brent to pursue the proposal with us to keep the project moving forward. So I've included on the, I believe you're still seeing the attachment that Brent gave, we will have structural engineering, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection consultants for IMEC, our Houston office here in town, or in Houston. Elsewhere is civil engineer. John Payne is our point of contact. We will have soil engineering consultants on board to do soil moorings and interior design consultant that I work with, Jenna Reed Walker. She's up in Michigan with myself. So the rest of the, I'm going to read through the whole thing, but the rest of it just outlines the different services that will be provided, you know, from the structural, mechanical, and then the architectural services. You'll see there is another small phase of programming, but then there's schematic design, design development, destruction documents, and construction administration that you'll see that myself provide. And then at the end, there's the destructure that's broken down. So.
Where's all that information he's talking about?
It was handed out to us prior to the meeting.
It should be right in front of you.
Yeah. So I have a question. We got this this evening before the meeting. Is this because we're taking that step offline, or is this just a late entry? Because it's really hard for us to consume all of this and make a...
That's not the official contract. I'll bring that in January. It's just telling us, you know, you understand what the next steps are with architectural stuff, and then we'll continue to move forward. I'll bring the whole package.
No, I'm moving forward with you, but I just, if we have to make a decision on, we haven't had time to consume it.
Right. And we just wanted to get this in front of you. We're down here. And so with the holidays coming and us being here, we wanted to get this in front of you. And, you know, this said possible action items. So we just wanted to, and I know Brent and I have already had multiple conversations about him providing you guys the formal contract and everything. So we just wanted to get this in front of you formally so that we can keep this project moving forward.
So we're not okay in this amount? We're just okay in partnering with you?
I mean, this would be the amount for the architecture and the design team, professional services. And this isn't like a lump sum. You have to pay it right away. This obviously goes, you know, per fix.
And is this going to be on this, was this on the CCPD meeting? Since that's going to be part of the, one of the funding mechanisms? So is CCPD sharing in cost?
Not this. We have that money already in reserve from the sale of other properties and different things. So for this part, we're just going to use it. Because this is professional services. We're not even to the bidding part, you know, when we'll have to, you know, plan that out a little more clear. But we have some cash in the general fund to take care of this.
That was from the Prairie Street.
No, that was a resale of that property back to the school.
So.
Prairie Street's common.
So we are, yes, to move forward for the, all of the architectural side and the engineering side to continue on, which I'm fine with who we're partnering with and doing. I think y'all have done a great job of listening to us.
Yes.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept item number seven as presented.
Motion by Ms. Fox that we accept item number seven as presented. Second by Mr. Olson. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number eight as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Seven, I'm sorry. Item number seven on your agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will accept item number seven on the agenda as presented. Number eight. Consideration of possible action on the acceptance of the public lift station located in Briarly, Phase 1A, Section 3, Development Number 2006. Mr. Rosowski.
Good evening. That's list of items. I'll go with you all for this item. Don't remember back in July, you accepted the infrastructure for Briarly with the exception of the lift station. So what wasn't there at the time was the natural gas line. That gas line has been installed. The generator has had its full startup with the manufacturer. And so this is now accepting the lift station portion. We would print the starting of one-year warranty for the lift station project. So the water sewer drainage, paving, everything outside of the lift station, that's on its own timeline back in July. Lift station, council's acceptance and wasn't... We had that startup. They addressed all the punchless items. And so our recommendation is to accept the lift station each of the one-year.
Make a motion, we accept agenda item number eight as presented.
Motion by Mr. Donaldson, we accept item number eight as presented. Second by Ms. Fox. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote. All those in favor of accepting item number eight as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will accept item number eight as presented. Number nine on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on formally ending the warranty period and releasing the maintenance bond for the public lift station within the Montgomery Bend Development, Development Number 2203.
Right. So this is the last item, so for Montgomery Bend, which is developed up on 1097. This is the lift station portion of that project. It's already been accepted. It was in the warranty period. We did a punchless inspection back on August 7. They completed all the punchless items since then. You have a copy of that completed punchless in your packet, which was pretty minor. And so they are ready to officially end the one-year warranty period for the lift station portion of Montgomery Bend.
Make a motion, we accept agenda item number nine as presented.
Motion by Mr. Donaldson, we accept item number nine as presented.
Second.
Second by Ms. Langley. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote. All those in favor of accepting item number nine as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will accept item number nine as presented. Ten on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on formally ending the warranty period and releasing the maintenance bond for the Montgomery Bend Section 1 Development, Development Number 2203.
Right. So this is for Section 1 of Montgomery Bend. Again, same thing. They had a warranty inspection back on August 7, the same time. The warranty period ended on August 13. There were punchless items identified. There were concrete panels that had to be replaced due to cracking. As we say, address those items. One thing to note, you remember back in August or earlier this year, they requested a one-year extension to the sidewalk portion of the project. They do home building timing. They asked for another year to get all the sidewalk portions installed. So that is not part of your acceptance. This is the water sewer drainage and roadways section. And if you look in your packets, go back a couple pages, you'll see copies of the punchless. That one item not marked has been completed based on how many of this is coming out, but the rest of it, so our recommendation is to officially end the warranty period, the exception of the sidewalks for Montgomery Bend, Section 1.
Make a motion, we accept agenda item number 10 as presented with the exclusion of the sidewalks that are not part of this agenda.
Motion by Mr. Donaldson, we accept item number 10 as presented with the exclusion of the sidewalks piece to be accepted at a later date.
Second.
Second by Mr. Olson. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote. All those in favor of accepting item number 10 as presented without, including the sidewalks, those will be approved at a later date, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will accept item number 10 as presented. Number 11. Consideration of possible action on formally ending the warranty period and releasing the maintenance bond for the Montgomery Bend, Section 2, Development, Development Number 2203.
Montgomery Bend, Section 2. That warranty period ended on October 21. We held a one-year warranty inspection October 22. A copy of that punchless is included in your packet. They have since addressed those punchless items. Again, with the exception of the sidewalks, for the one-year periods of this, general, same as the last item, Section 2 is accepted a couple months after Section 1, which might have been different. Other than that, so your ending the warranty period with the exception of the sidewalks, not Montgomery Bend, Section 2.
And the trees, is that right?
Yes, the trees are still on here. Those are part of the, hmm, let's actually look for it.
I don't know.
I will double check on the trees. Do you want to check out that there's trees?
So you're not sure if they are or aren't?
So with each block, they have to plant the trees? Oh, 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 oh. So this is with the home builders. So it's noted on their landscape plan. They have one tree in the front, one tree in the back, each. It's something that's on the plans that's not done, so that's why it's on here. They're being installed with...
Until, yeah.
And it's being enforced?
But that's part of the building code review.
Okay, it's the trees. Trees?
So, Mr. Hannah, you police the trees?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not part of the building code review?
It's on the individual home builders, so we'll get a stab on who is part of the tree. It's all...
Would that fall on, I mean, is that code? It's not code?
No. On the development agreement. Is it with you?
I'll do the reading.
Okay.
Okay. So I make a motion to accept item number 11 with the exclusion of the sidewalks to be approved at a later date and the trees to be enforced by our city code enforcement for the development agreement.
Motion by Mr. Olson, second by Mr. Donaldson, that we accept item number 11 as presented, excluding the sidewalks that will be a part of another point in time for their one-year warranty and the trees, the trees that are part of the development agreement to be enforced by our code enforcement. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 11 as presented, excluding the sidewalks to a later date and the trees to be enforced via the development agreement by code enforcement, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will accept item number 11 as presented, excluding sidewalks, trees to be enforced by Ms. Tilly. Number 12. Consideration of possible action on the final plots for Briarly, Phase 1B, formerly known as Redbird Meadows, Section 4, 5, and 6, Development Number 2006.
Sorry, page 96 of your packets will see a memo from us, followed by the individual plots for each section. This holds 112 blocks in these four sections. It's listed in the letter to you, just to remind you... Uh, this holds a hundred and twelve lots in these four sections, uh, listed in the letter to you, just a reminder of variances that they have received as well as an update on the sidewalk line, uh, component. Uh, so if you remember, the development, twenty percent of the sidewalk lines needed to be upgraded. That was over the entirety of the development, not per section. Uh, currently with what has been provided to date, they're at fourteen percent, with larger lots coming in the future phases that make up that delta to get to twenty four percent. Uh, so just wanted to give you an update on where that component of it stood, because that was a main point of the development agreement. Other than that, there's still, we still will have to come back to you to accept the public infrastructure, uh, for these, so there's no acceptance, they're not giving building permits, it's just, is the plot done? Uh, and then they'll come back for acceptance of the infrastructure. Uh, in fact, I think there was inspection this morning, uh, for the final one.
So, third question, Chris.
Sorry.
The minimum lot size at that time was forty five?
Not for this, uh, so this was with sixteen, seventies and eighties.
Yeah.
That's what the basis.
Okay, so that's good to know. So how come we have forty twos, fifty sevens, fifties?
What are you seeing forty two, lot number ten?
Number one, forty two feet. Number ten is forty two.
So it's the, it's the, the addition of all three of those, so it's line thirteen, which I have to look at the table. So forty two point three three plus line thirteen plus the four point one eight, which is the total.
Line thirteen is fourteen feet.
So that's the eighteen plus the forty two, sixteen.
I'm not seeing it, boss. So what about lot thirteen?
So lot thirteen.
Sixty eight across the back and forty four in the front?
Correct, and so that's forty four, and then you have C nineteen as a curb, when on curbs, trees are measured at the building line width, which is over that six. When it's on curves, because obviously you have a tighter front than back. Same thing with lot fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
So is that, when that width is eighty five in the back, is it, um, considered an eighty five foot lot?
So it is measurable on the front block line, so we don't, when you're looking at the mixture of lots, it's measured on the front block width. And at curves, it is measured at the building line, not at the right amount because of. So.
The building width.
Correct, on the, on the curved streets. And so a lot of these, you'll see, because these are curved, like when you go to lot two on the south side of the street, it's fifty three point three and eight point six six, so you add those two together to get your sixty foot lot. Which is on a curve point, so it's not one dimensional.
Do you have any questions?
This one presented, plenty of options, I think it's.
So, this one right here. Twenty one is fifty four.
Yeah, that part.
Yeah, I don't know, but I understand that, because I don't see how that's.
Yeah, so the building line in the back, how to, you know, back up and measure, uh, just some of these, I.
It's like fifteen, it's like sixty six, sixteen, I can't look at all of it. Looks the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, next.
Okay.
Jesus. Thank you. Make a motion to accept item number twelve as presented.
Motion by Mr. Olson, that we accept item number twelve as presented.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Langley, this motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number twelve as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we'll accept item number twelve as presented. Thirteen on your agenda, consideration of possible action authorizing the mayor to sign the second amendment to the pump and hall agreement by, between the city of Montgomery and the developer, JDS Old Plantersville Road LLC, for the Briarly development, development number two thousand and six.
Right. Uh, I will introduce this and then Ellen, um, can jump in as well as Matt Banks is here from Donaldson, that can address any of the specific questions you have. Uh, so if you remember, there was a pump and hall agreement in place, uh, for the lift station we just accepted, uh, a couple extra times ago. Uh, so in the interim, while the lift station was not operational, uh, and they had flow, they had a pump and hall agreement to be able to to still continue to build while that lift station was in operation. Now we're, that lift station is then done, we're now moving that to the next section. And so what they're proposing is a second pump and hall, or amendment to the pump and hall agreement to account for the rec center and section seven and eight, um, into the agreement for pump and hall. Uh, they have submitted, as of earlier today, the plans for the, uh, long term, or the permanent lift station that's going to serve this area. Uh, and this is all expected, so where they are in section seven and eight, in the rec center, uh, we've done one round of reviews for section seven. Uh, we've just received section eight plans last week, and so, I mean, we, there's time to go, uh, but they're trying to get ahead of it. But they get the same request that y'all have, have seen before.
And I see that the agreement shall terminate upon the completion of the city acceptance of lift station number two, when is that?
So they just submitted plans for that this morning. So when, I mean, likelihood is it's a year from now? Before or less, uh, by the time the plan approval, bidding, construction.
It's crazy.
Make a motion to accept item number thirteen, as presented.
Motion by Mr. Olson, that we accept item number thirteen as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Langley, this motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number thirteen as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we'll accept item number thirteen as presented. Fourteen on your agenda, consideration of possible action on the acceptance of a feasibility study, summary memo on the Montgomery Flex Business Center development, development number two five oh eight.
Right. Uh, in your packets, you have a copy of a summary memo, so again, this is a shorter version of the ability study, just based on where it is, what it is, there's no public extension required, et cetera, to serve the site. Uh, so I will run over the highlights of the study with you, uh, and just direct you if you have any questions. So if you look at the first exhibit on where this is, uh, this is located on ten ninety seven. Essentially just due east of the water plant, the site, up on ten ninety seven. So it's a, it's two point seven eight acre tract, they're looking to do warehouse space, um, flat space. On that, you'll see a copy of the site plan of two buildings totaling twenty seven thousand, give or take, square feet, uh, on this site with the detention column in the back. Uh, so I will run through our study. So first of all, water and sewer, they're not estimating, uh, a lot of water usage based on their intended use. They're looking at approximately sixteen hundred gallons a day of water, obviously, that's based off of best assumptions. Tenants drastically change that, and that will come through build outs and plan designs, et cetera, if they need more or less water. Uh, but based on the assumptions and the what's provided by the developer, he's estimating about just seventy hundred gallons a day. Uh, as far as the tile location, include water and sewer along ten ninety seven, uh, so they will tie into the water line on ten ninety seven. There's an exhibit C, uh, in your packets, uh, showing that. As far as sewer goes, uh, there's a sewer line on the back, uh, southwest turn of the property uh, that runs right through there, there's existing easements, uh, for that line, so they'll connect to that point as well for their sewers for the site. As far as drainage goes, again, it'll be private drainage, they'll be responsible for completing a drainage study, submitting it for approval. Uh, right now, as you can see on the site plan, they're proposing detention, uh, to mitigate their entrance flood. Uh, if they do decide to outfall to text stop, uh, they would have to give a text stop for approval of that drainage. Regarding paving, plating, et cetera, uh, it is a, right now, they're proposing to use an existing driveway onto ten ninety seven. Uh, that's a day, they have a access agreement, uh, with the neighboring property owners, and there's always one driveway to access the site. Uh, which is what text stop prefers, which is the most driveways, most people entering into the highway. It will be up to date in the text stop, if text stop's going to require any type of improvements, uh, to accommodate it, uh, that would be a text stop call. And finally, the tract is owned currently PD, uh, so which allows this type of use, uh, from basing the information we know on the shell buildings, uh, within that PD zone. It has, they have submitted and have received approval from Buffalo Springs Architectural亙建 Company, uh, for the proposed buildings in that site. Uh, they, it is not plotted, they will need a platform development per applicable codes. Uh, financial feasibility, uh, looking at just add the lawn tax, we do not look at sales tax, uh, it's part of our analysis. Uh, they're estimating total volume around fourteen or two, one four million dollars of full build out, uh, for the project, uh, which is approximately thirteen thousand in owner tax and forty three hundred dollars in debt service tax, if that will build up based on your current rates, uh, of collecting current tax rates in the city. And then when you flip to the next page, uh, you'll see a summary of the costs associated with the development, so they would have a additional estro account to, before to cover the cost of city administrative time, plan review time, coordination, legal, et cetera, uh, required. And then the impact fees. So the impact fees are based off of three two inch water moves. Um, again, the final site plan will tell us exactly what that is, if you want it to be a quarter inch. Uh, and so that'll be, they will pay the impact fees based on the actual size of the area, which is how your ordinance is written, but uh, based on the information provided, we estimate it will take a two inch, you know, that is three. But again, they, the way that your impact fees are written out is they are assessed at the time of plotting, due at the time of connection. So essentially, when they plot property, they lock the rates. If you remember during our last impact fee discussion, the state has now changed updates every three years. So locking in the rates, they're going to be building out within that three year time, more than likely, um, before that, before that. So, uh, next steps is, you know, the belt release provided, which is an estro, uh, deposit to keep the process going in terms of plan reviews. Uh, if they have any variances, if they have not mentioned any at this time, uh, they will need to come back for approval of those variances. So through the plating process, plan approval process for civil and also the building plan, and payment of impact fees. Uh, we do not have in the process any required MOU or belt improvement, as they are not, uh, installing any type of public utility uh, that needs to be outlined in the form of the agreement, probably responsible for the cost.
Chris, um, looking at the rendering, it looks like from every boundary, corner to corner to corner to corner, is all going to be concrete.
Right.
So what's that drainage look like? Is that drainage going down ten ninety seven? Is it going across Plaz Morgan?
So it will ultimately go across Plaz Morgan, so they're, they're, are they're proposing attention in the back to the outfall, you know, across. There's a drainage easement that exists between property lines to go to Plaz Morgan.
To that, to that, to that area that's in need of attention?
Correct, I mean, they will have to submit plans that show me, we're not going to let them just, you know, let the water go down the hill and run it away. Uh, you know, they will have to submit plans showing how they're going to install it, how they're protecting it, so.
A lot of concrete.
Again, they have to submit any construction plans or drainage analysis or anything at this time, but based on the concept, it's, they're going to provide attention to mitigate their flows uh, and utilize any of the drainage expenses to, uh, outfall.
It looks like to me that the sewer line, they want to connect on the southwest end, that if there's an easement there, um, the way I see that sewer line, it's cutting across the northeast corner of the water plant property.
Correct.
So, um, so is it not going to be in our property line?
So it's, there's two faults. So one, when the drawings on file for the sewer system shows that it does at ninety, it goes down the property line. Uh, there's other records that show that it does a different angle. Ultimately, that whole area by plats covered with an easement, that is allowed to have that public connection, other connection to it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Maybe, it just looks weird.
It, a hundred percent, I mean, we, we looked at it a couple times, but, you know, a lot of the things, you know, in, in different parts of town, what as well, record drawing show versus reality shows, what we do know is what's plotted, that's a recorded document, so we know where easements are, and there are easements in the area for them to get to. But another option, uh, that we looked at was, you know, have them put in a private grinder pump, go up ten ninety seven. That is not ideal, ideally, we do flow by gravity, um, it's, it's, it's simpler than everyone, and, uh, for that the preferences they, they go to that. Now, if they go and they, they survey the site and figure out that it's not feasible, again, based on agile plans and depth, it should be, uh, then obviously, we'd really consider to, uh, how to get service plans.
So Chris or Ms. Tilly, maybe you can answer this. The plan development, what is allowed to be, what businesses are, are allowed to be in plan development? I mean, it's warehouses, so obviously I, it can't put industrial in there if it's not zoned industrial.
So it's the plan development, that's the, the overlying zoning. The secondary zoning is the multi-use, and under the multi-use, it would allow for this kind of warehousing, office type of storage. Now, if, let's say that it was straight out to commercial, it would not have allowed something like that, it would have to be under, at least our existing zoning code. It would have to be under industrial use in order for warehousing to work in that zoning structure. But because it's PD with the underlying multi-use zoning, it covers that type of use, kind of, in any.
So there's no restriction on what they can put, the warehouses, what they can use the warehouses for there?
Not.
Grape shops all the way down.
Well, I'm just asking.
I know, yeah.
Because it's unclear the way that, it's zoned plan development, so, okay, it's, it's a little strange.
It's vague and it's intense.
Retail that way is usually not allowed, you, you could.
So is it, is it going to look like what's across the street to the over trucks at Summit Business Park? Is it similar to that?
No.
Okay.
The orders, Ogre Chucks property is zoned industrial.
Yeah.
It's zoned industrial. Um, that's on my list of things to take care of here.
So when you say multi-use, what does that mean?
Multi-use, okay, every second is going at this way. So the plan development was under that whole large plan development, what do we call it, the, what that developed, okay? They had the secondary zoning of multi-use, they had secondary zoning of residential use. They have definition, uh, in their development agreement of what residential use is, and what the multi-use is.
Correct. It all expired.
The, the overlying.
Those definitions would have expired.
Yes, development agreement expired, and, and the, the main part of that development agreement is that it honed in on the two thousand and four ordinance, city ordinance, okay? The two thousand and four city ordinance did not have a secondary zoning of multi-use, it was just plan development. Typically, when you have a plan development and you have that secondary zoning, the zoning ordinance should have been updated to reflect what that multi-use secondary zoning allowed. That did not occur. So when the two thousand and four zoning ordinance no longer applied because the development agreement expired, we don't have anything right now in the zoning ordinance that would cover the multi-use. multi-use. It's still a PD via multi-use. There should have been something that happened when this expired that either took on the PD multi-use and redefined it into our zoning ordinance, or changed the zoning into what we currently have in our ordinance.
And that's the PD that expired in January 2024?
Yes.
So the, the zoning, all the zoning ordinances that we, we have from, what is it?
KDC.
They say C, they don't, they don't address multi-use?
Right now, I don't adopt C yet, so it's addressed in doctrine.
But we have, we have temporary stuff until we get it.
Temporary, yeah, but we haven't adopted it.
Yeah, we, we adopted the temporary stuff to cover us until the new ordinances are in place.
I don't think it includes this.
Only chapter seventy-eight.
It doesn't.
Yeah.
Chapter ninety-eight.
No.
There's no interim, there's no, nothing at this time. Right now, it's being reviewed, but chapter seventy-eight of the subdivision grant is passed.
Okay.
But zoning is not under chapter seventy-eight in the subdivision grant.
So now that we don't have a definition of multi-use, it can be, it can be wide open?
Yeah. Um, I mean, it, it can be, it can be regulated by the watering, such as the drainage, the parking requirements, to all of a sudden have like an event venue of twenty-eight thousand square feet and it's going to use all of this water and it's going to require all of this parking. It would have to come back here to you to say, yeah, we'll give them a parking variance of a hundred parking spaces because this lot would be able to fit a twenty-eight thousand square foot building for events. Do you see where that kind of restriction could take place?
Yeah.
An auto repair garage. So a full-fledged auto repair garage, not a naves tire, not a discount tire or anything like that, let's say an auto repair garage, you're going to require a whole bunch of other things, whether it's the drainage, the, the grease traps, the water usage, the outdoor storage. We can cover all of that, I guess, underneath the zoning ordinance that we have, even though we don't have a multi-use zoning. We have the PD zoning. If you read the PD zoning, it states that our zoning ordinance should be able to cover what the PD zoning reflects. At this time, it doesn't. But all we can do right now, because we don't have it, is to be able to try and regulate it with whatever use wants to go into that spot. Know what I mean? So the PD MU wouldn't allow for a single-family residential because the PDR would allow for a single-family residential. The PD MU would not allow for, I don't think it would allow for a multi-family because I think there's a PD.
I think there was, actually.
I don't have the map in front of me of what the restrictions are. So multi-family, I don't believe we're able to go there.
So those two apartment complexes that happened on Pleasant Morgan, we had absolutely no say, no nothing on those. They're like institutional and awful, they're eyes for the city. Yes, I said that. So just ensuring that that same thing does not happen here, because that's going to be on a major highway.
So those were built under that expired development agreement?
Yes, I understand.
So that goes, went away? That's what, my whole thing is, what are you planning back on?
Potentially could, could potentially be here?
What are we considering that might, that could potentially be?
My question is, it's not about whether we want something there or don't want something there, we want to know what can come in there because we.
What is possible? A mosque, a tire shop, a Costco, like what is possible?
Mosque would be a church, which is an institutional use. I don't know that the PD, I have to read the definition of what the PD MU, if it said anything about an institutional use, I don't believe it's saying anything about institutional use. So, um, let's say that it's commercial and you ask me what can go into that spot? Anything that's listed under a commercial zoning issue? Anything listed under a commercial issue? So it's almost like the PD MU would have anything that's listed under that commercial history.
Figure out how much stuff we got in our plan development zoning and fix this.
Where are we with this? I thought that was supposed to be, all of our updated ordinances?
It's still under PD.
It's coming in March, isn't it?
I'll hold you to that.
Alan, do you have a comment on that multi-use?
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I'm confused by it.
I am.
Plan development, multi, there's got to be something defined by plan development.
Yeah, so, so normally, you have, even when you have planned developments, you have underlying zoning that controls. But it sounds like in this particular case, there is not a defined underlying zoning with that.
So then how can we prove anything without?
Plan development was boundaries.
Yeah. Even zoning that applies.
We might need to dig back into the historical records of that.
Should we table this and kind of go back and see if we can find anything that? Well, you're disguised.
It's just for the feasibility study.
Yeah, this is just the feasibility study, so I don't think you need to table that. But I think we need to maybe dig back into the records and see if we can find some additional guidance, because it's very confusing.
So again, the PD MU was approved back in 2004?
Yeah, twenty-some years ago.
Right. And the definition was in the development agreement. And in the, I don't know if we can use the restrictive covenants as part of that, I know are enforced under restrictive covenant.
City doesn't have the authority to restrict that, to use restrictive covenants.
And that's why the Architectural Control Committee still has say is because of the restrictive covenants that the city is not part of.
I wonder why that was presented.
Right, so the way it was set up, those restricted covenants gave the entire PD to the Buffalo Springs Architectural Control Committee for their permit, even though it's well outside of Buffalo Springs.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's, at the time, Buffalo Springs was what was there. And that was a starting point, and that was the, I'm speculating at this point, but that was the entity in place. And so by default, entity in place. So they cover the rest of it, and that's how it stays, or how it stayed.
But this is just a feasibility study, it's not.
Correct, it still has to come back. There's plan approvals, slat approvals, and then obviously, any variances that they're requesting, that they'll have to come back for requesting back.
So this just goes back to my constant question of the chicken and the egg, how we do a feasibility study if we don't know what's being built? Right?
And that's hard with, with, you know, these spec spaces, you know, we have another one coming up later on the day, it's the same thing. It's not unlike VCS or even shops in Montgomery or any of the other retail spaces that, you know, most of them have a, an anchor that's known, but then all the rest of the buildout is, is a big question mark, and that can drastically change. When they sit off a, you know, retail was a conservative number to give, but yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of zoning changes and special use permits and things that come up because, you know, at the time of feasibility, you don't know, is it going to be a bank or a fast group of shops, is there a drive-through or not a drive-through? It's really just concept, how to get water, sewer, whatever the drainage for the roads and other considerations.
Make a motion to accept item fourteen as presented?
Question by Mr. Olson, that we accept item fourteen as presented?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Donaldson, this motion's debatable, amenable, requires majority vote, open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item fourteen as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we'll accept item fourteen as presented. Fifteen on your agenda. Consideration of possible action regarding authorizing the city engineer to begin design of the downtown improvement project, the project.
The project, I don't like that, project. Again, I thought that we panelists, until we continue, because as you read through your.
It's just the road, not the, that's phase two, what you're talking about. We separated it on purpose.
Right, so, oh, I can introduce it. So the two components of it, so phase one is just what Mr. Walker said, is roadway, revised improvements of McCowan, getting rid of the decking, getting it cleaned up, put together with some consideration for hard state paving improvements at the community center site, really to fix the, the parking area. And so it's doing paving, economy of scale, not at the same time. Phase two is what happens on and around the site itself. Now, obviously, if, you know, by the time this goes forward, it's still undecided what we're going to do on the site, we're not going to go redo the parking lot if it's subject to change.
I guess you say, why are we going to do all this if something changes with the building itself?
Correct, so that's why, you know, really focusing on the roadway.
Yeah. Then it gets McCowan going and then we'll have a plan for the north side.
That's why there's a phase two.
We're doing the whole thing, okay, see, I'm sorry.
Phase two is the parking lot north. Phase one is McCowan Street. We're voting on phase one.
Um, phase two is part of it, but, but it could change if we could get in the motion.
It is for the phase one McCowan Street improvements.
That's how it's explained to us at MUC.
Right.
And it is exciting what is planned for McCowan Street, it's going to look so much better.
Make a motion to accept item fifteen as presented for phase one of the project?
Motion by Mr. Olson, that we accept item fifteen as presented with phase one of the project, in regards to phase one of the project.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donaldson. This motion's debatable, amenable, requires majority vote, open for discussion. All those in favor of authorizing the item number fifteen for phase one of this project, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept item fifteen as presented for phase one. Number sixteen on your agenda, consideration of possible action authorizing the city administrator to design the TechStop sponsorship letter for the Legacy Grove Development, bill number two four oh nine.
In your packets, we'll see a copy of a draft letter for your review. I'll pull up to the letter, so I'll explain what this is. So Legacy Grove, which is the TriPoint development that goes all the way from Love Star Parkway to 105. Do you remember, and in front of you, you have a burial drawing of the feasibility study, just to kind of wrap this thing together, was a proposed thoroughfare that connects ultimately Love Star Parkway to 105 and then goes through to 149. So developer is building a portion of that roadway as part of their project. It's also going to be their entrance off of 105, so it's part of the development. And so what this is, since they're proposing a public roadway that would be city responsibility tying into one of a TechStop facility, they require the local entity to provide a letter of support, which is what this is. This is not an approval of design, this is supporting what's there. Some of the concerns just in that area is, hold, there are a lot of driveways in this area, so this driveway is proposed between Mid-South driveway and Westway, which is also NAPA. So there's a lot of driveways in a short frame, or short span, as you said. I know developers had ongoing conversations with Mid-South, they tried to eliminate, tie them in to the new road. City has recently had conversations with NAPA regarding the same thing, trying to reduce thematic connections and tie them in to this proposed roadway to help clean up that intersection and then as well as taking Westway and connecting it to this road, so again, removing additional connections at 105. Westway's a little more complicated just because of city limit lines, it's one of those, it's, city limit line doesn't cover all of Westway Drive, so it's kind of city, kind of county, it's just conversations that, you know, continue to have with the precinct on accepting and modifying that roadway.
So basically, it's just that one road and then every other road in here is dead ends?
Yes.
And through traffic.
Well, I mean, it was.
Right here, but not here.
Finish, yeah.
No, yes, this is, but just here, that's good.
So you said the city's having conversations with NAPA and Mid-South, how'd the conversations go?
So developers having a conversation with Mid-South, I, I, for myself, I have not talked to Mid-South, I can't speak for staff, but they have, as far as NAPA goes, they, they came to the city regarding some amendments are substantial to their site, they're looking at expansion and adding some buildings, and so that was part of the discussion with them, is this project is coming, it would be great if we can get the driveway into Dover and tie it into here, we're going to go on the one intersection versus having the large project. They were receptive to the idea, but the conversation we had, we wouldn't consult and stuff, we don't hurt up there, so that's, that's locked off at this time, that was a couple weeks ago.
And so nobody's talked to Mid-South?
From the city side, I don't believe so. And TriPoint is here, and they're welcome to answer questions if you.
Good evening, Brad Sullivan, TriPoint. We have had two or three discussions with Mid-South and they are, they're open to many changes if we, their, their real concerns are customer access to their driveways, in and outs, is it going to be convenient? We've come up with a couple designs that would work for them. I won't be careful what I say, but I don't want to say we're, we're, it's a sure thing, but we're making good headway with them, they're more than willing to work with us and from TriPoint's point of view, it is, it's in our best interest as a company to have a few driveways that possibly, as far as aesthetic, so.
Just safety of it all too, right? In and out. So I just want to know how the conversation went, if they were open to it or if they were not.
They're, they're very open to it.
How many lots are going to be here?
The homes?
Yeah, how many lots?
There's a whole hundred.
One hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
I'm excited to see how this. All right, so this is for the letter to TechStop to sponsor the, the application?
Correct, so this is approval for the city administrator to sign the letter.
Make a motion to accept item sixteen as presented?
Motion by Mr. Olson, that we accept item sixteen as presented?
Aye.
By Mr. Donaldson? All those in favor of accepting item sixteen as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we'll accept items of sixteen as presented. Seventeen, consideration of possible action on the acceptance of the engineer's recommendation of award to complete the construction services related to the lift station number five relocation project.
Oh, right. So this is not in your packet, it is sitting in front of you, it was attempted to get emailed out earlier, but it's been kicked back. So what this is, bring it up in space, this is again related to TriPoint, are their developing of the city was to relocate lift station number five and increase its capacity to serve the district development. So we did receive bids last Thursday, December the fourth. We evaluated the bids, we had a couple meetings with TriPoint, we're doing contractors, we're reviewing time, we're reviewing cost, and ultimately, our recommendations to save this project with Mayor Curry, they were below there, they are also being contracted, they don't currently have one of the College Street projects, so there's some from there there in the city. The low base bid came in at two point oh eight four, nine twenty-seven, and three hundred calendar days, so it's in transition. If you look in the second page of our attachment, you'll see a copy of the bid tabulation, we had a total of six bidders ranging from that low of two point oh eight to a high of three point one seven. This bid come in over our estimate, there was a handful of factors that went into that. One was comparing from contractors, depth is always an issue, so this is, turned out to be a deep lift station, we talked about that previously. Also working in existing right away in congested, so there's a lot of relocation utilities along 105 to, in order to take the flow that's currently going to lift station five, we'll get down the pitch and take it back down the road we just talked about to this new repotable station. So those factor in. One of the requests that's not part of your bid tonight, but more of just a heads up, is the developer has asked and is wanting to meet with staff in the coming days, before the holidays, to talk about potentially modifying. days, before the holidays, to talk about potentially modifying their development agreement to stair step their pace. So instead of putting the full amount for a 300 day contract, they're requesting to say, let's do this once a quarter, every three months or so, in order to, to catch flow, so, which I feel is a reasonable ask.
Absolutely.
And so, again, that's not part of the action tonight, it's more of bringing that people's attention, and over the coming weeks, we'll be meeting with staff, working out the terms of that, and then bringing it to you, likely your first day or even if possible, to get this paper done, so we can continue.
Where on this plot is that lift station? I know it's not Martha, but roughly.
So it's just south of the creek, or the drainage that runs through the site, this lift station sits just on the south side of that, but right up to it.
And that's, that's the new location?
That's the new location.
You said AR Turnkey, we've worked with them before, they did College Street?
They're currently working on College.
Okay.
We've worked with them in the past, we have them on multiple projects right now, they're a good contractor, we're, we know that with TriPoint and elsewhere, similar qualifications, past experiences, et cetera, and are both comfortable. The second low bidder, just for your experience, is also a newer company, we worked with the owners of that company for a long time, but the difference in cost of the sewer plus out dog doesn't justify the difference in contract. So action tonight on this one, so Tuesday is awarding the contract to AR Turnkey and authorized, is subject to receipt of the deposits, which we'll come back to, but so what will happen between now and your next meeting, the work with construction contracts, bonds, insurance, everything else, have those ready to be executed, it's the holidays, so things took a little bit longer, and then at the January meeting, come back to the limit, a work regarding the cost of payments, and then once both are executed, deposits made in that contract, we get executed as far as construction.
Make a motion, we accept agenda item number 17 as presented.
Motion by Mr. Donaldson, we accept item 17 as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Olson. All those in favor accepting item 17 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and will accept item 17 as presented. Number 18 on your agenda, consideration of possible action on the acceptance of a utility and economic feasibility study on the Montgomery Retail SR 105 LLC, development, develop, number 2506.
Alright, so in your packets, you'll see a copy of the feasibility study for this development, we've gone through these before, we'll talk further than this one, what we just went over on the agenda, obviously, was based on a summer demo, not as detailed, this one, we will spend some time on updated projections of water and sewer, because they are getting close, updates on the projects addressing those water and sewer capacities, as well as obviously, the development as a whole. The developer is also here to be having some questions for this. So, in general, this property is the property adjacent to H2B, so this is the, you remember, H2B was only looking at probably half of the site, this is the other half of the site, including the hard corner at 105 and 2854. So currently, they have agreements with H2B between the two parties, so the masquerading that's being done covers both of these sites, the tension being put in covers both of these sites, but that's where it stops, they would pick up on their own, retaining laws on their own, infrastructure, things like that, but there's some economy scale there, it's much dirt, because of proceedings, I know we all have seen that they're moving, doing that lots of times. So, for this development, so you'll see exhibit A, just shows the location of the property, follow that by their proposed site plan is on the next page, exhibit B, you'll see proposed retail, in back, retail restaurant space, kind of midway through the site, and then potential quick serve restaurants in front, but they bank at the hard corner. Again, kind of like we talked about in the last study, this is a conceptual plan, it is subject to change, based on the individual type of users, they might come in, pads might shift, but overall, development, they're looking at a total 72,000 square feet of building area currently proposed on the site.
Chris, again, drainage, drainage will go down 105, underneath 105 at CVS and head out behind the urgent care?
No, so for these, the, the majority of this site will head toward, can't remember the name of this creek, the creek that goes between the car wash and.
Pizza Shack, yeah.
It's, it's escaping me at this time. So they are, there's a detention pond on this side of the site, that that will drain into, and then ultimately discharge into that creek, they've gotten approvals for that drainage.
Stewart Creek, is that Stewart Creek?
I think it's a tributary of Stewart Creek, so Stewart Creek is the one that goes behind Chick-fil-A.
Okay.
But it's a tributary of, and then there's also a pond on the H2B side, adjacent to 2854, that discharged that way. So, majority of their site will go toward the east and go underneath by Pizza Shack, a small portion of some of the hard corners will go toward 2854.
Okay. That question has been asked, so thank you for the dump.
They have submitted, so text stop, whatever they're discharging in the text stop, I only text stop is the governing agency on that, just also for clarity.
Any indication what they're going to put in that little corner, 2854?
So, the, according to the site plan, again, developers can, can jump in and wag to this, they have, they have the labels, they propose the hardcore of 2854, 105.
It's a bank.
Bank?
Bank.
Okay, following that, just sticking on the exhibits, four now, the next exhibit you see on your page is the utility extension exhibit, so again, H2B extended the properties to their boundary, they are picking it up, carrying it along their frontage, and then for the water line, we're recommending that they extend it across 105 with it to create a water line loop. Right now, everything down to Pizza Shack is on a dead end, this is on a dead end, so closing that loop will help with the density pressure, et cetera. And then extending the sewer line as far as needed in order to serve the site, there's nothing else to be served. There is a small section of the city on the opposite side of the creek, that just based on elevations, they'll put in a pump station to pump across the creek, timing gravity across the creek was, was the most, we'll take this one as, as far as the show. Welcome back to the projection numbers, we're going to get the rest of, kind of the meat of this report, going back to T E Station, and then we'll talk about capacities and projects. So when it comes to the executive summary, overall, again, I'll come back to the capacities, when you look at development costs, they have digital estimate account for plan reviews, not my views, plan reviews, development agreement, costs, administration, things like that, cost of the estimate, cost of the public infrastructure, and then the water and sewer cap fees that are proposed, again, based on assumptions of this development. Basic information provided by the developer, looking at approximately $12 million of full build out, which leads to approximately $45,000 in additional act of more tax, based on your current tax rates. As far as zoning, move on to page four, the introduction section, we talked about the site plan, the, currently it's zone B, and it will stay B commercial, based on the proposed usages, obviously, as we discussed with H2B and others, there could be special use permit on the drivethrus, et cetera, based on the work of the time and potential awareness that they will come at that time, as they have sites locked in. And now moving into the water and sewer system capacity, so, when you go back and look at the graphs, you'll see the projected usages of the city, these are based on average daily flows, they do not account seasonally, they suggest 12 month average daily flow, obviously, at this time of year, the numbers will be less, but there is a lot of demand in the city, and a lot of demand continuing in the city with developments. So currently, just to start with a speed, y'all have capacity roughly 570,000 gallons a day, based on TCU rules, like I talked about last time, that is based off a average daily flow, so everything running in 10 hours a day, you have a 2.4 peaking factor that you keep in your system as part of that. Water plant, and I'll cover this in our other report, but water plant number two, as of earlier today, got approval to get that back online from the TCU, so you're now restored, both water plant two and water plant three online. The water plant three booster pump addition project, so as of this morning, the schedule for that is it will be substantially complete on March the fourth, so you've had booster pump down, which raises your capacity from 568 to 730,000 gallons a day, they're just waiting on materials at this point, rather than some RPA funded grant payment project that is ongoing. And then the bait project, which is water plant number four, over, we have a briar early development, we were bidding six percent plans earlier this week, maybe last week, and we are working through with the developer, excuse me, with the engineer on that design, they're working through the permitting, and as well as putting in some early procurement. So right now, the biggest lead time on construction projects is pumps and electrical equipment, and so those are items that they are finalizing, especially cases for early, so if available, the city can procure those before the rest of the plans are complete, in order to help speed up that timeline on equipment procurement.
Chris, would you call these projections on this, this chart conservative, or?
They are conservative, and they're intended to be that, so we go based off of one, what developer says and what industry standards are, typically those are conservative, as well as the build out requirements. So we, you know, try to be a little bit more aggressive, as you can see, when you look at our historical trend, which is the solid orange line versus, and then even through, you know, 20.6, things just start taking off on the, on your projection. So it is conservative, it is intended to be conservative, however, it is still, the underlying message is still that we're growing, water capacity is increasing, and the projects that you have underway continue to push your way.
With a nice buffer, in the event that.
And again, all this is based on average daily flows, average daily flow capacity of the plants, is not saying that, hey, at this point in time, water can't be produced, we have a 2.4 peaking factor that we keep in there, as well as, when you look at the next project, which is booster pump three coming online the first of March, between now and March, we're at our lowest use of water lines, so that gives us a little bit of pushing, but it's still an aggressive schedule, there's still a lot of, a lot of development coming, and when you're looking at, you're looking at this projection map, beyond, you know, we, according to this, in your most kind of aggressive projection of things in the city that could develop, you're running out of capacity of water plant number four in the middle of the place, which, again, your limiting factor addresses in the written report, comes back down to booster pumps, so you have well capacity for it, you have tank capacity for it, in these scenarios of, of large growth, so you can either one, install additional booster pumps, or request a exception from the state to be able to have plus booster pumps, because you'll at that time have elevated storage in other parts for pressure maintenance. So, there is a lot, it is getting very close, and as I say, the recommendation is, you know, a continual basis of monitoring connections, monitoring capacity, and the timing of developments, you know, every time, you know, we knew feasibility, and, and really, every couple weeks, we get updates on, hey, where do we stand on build out, where do we stand on these projects moving forward, especially the big, you have, you know, right now, two apartment complexes of 300 to 350 units apiece, between the track behind Pizza Shack and the track on the BCS property, you know, those two alone, I don't have the numbers in front, we are, I think, 60,000 gallons apiece a day, so I mean, that's a, a large chunk of this increase as we can have those apartment complexes, that, you know, based on A's projections, I think the first unit is already getting delivered September last quarter of '27 for those apartment complexes, so.
So, you need to move on.
But, no, on this one, I'll, I'll speed it up, and the next one will be similar. The wastewater plant, when you look at the next exhibit, is a lot of the same, you have a little bit more buffer, you're not seeing growth there, and wastewater capacity or demand, but again, based on timing, you're kind of right, right on lines with those projects in the middle of '27, I know you have an item on the funding on those plant projects here, later on your agenda, let me just make sure there's nothing else to hit. We talked about the later utilities, talked about water and sewer. Drainage, please, again, talked about, detention is part of the masquerading, they'll have to get approvals to do that, I do want to note, because it is important, it's a lot, the vegetative setback requirements are the same here as they are with H2B, so they have to have the 25 foot along the back, they're not requesting grants from that, it's planted with trees along the back of the property where they have a single camera. And that is the basis of our report, unless you have any questions.
And give one for me, another chance.
Make a motion, we accept agenda item number 18 as presented.
Motion by Mr. Donaldson, we accept item number 18 as presented. Second, second by Ms. Langley. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires a majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting number 18 as presented, say aye.
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 I withhold, I have no idea what all that ramble of shit was about, it has very little to do with 18.
It's a feasibility study about water consumption, and they're putting in a lot of businesses, to show that we are in a good spot for water consumption. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 18 as presented. Number 19 on your agenda, consideration of possible action on formally ending the warranty period and releasing the maintenance bond for the Old Plantersville Forest Main project.
Alright, so this is one of the projects fitted by Johnson Development as far as the bribery, so we talked about the lift station earlier in this meeting, this is the force main that serves that lift station, it went down, just after, so the elderly warrant inspection back off of the 52, the deficiencies noted have since been addressed, and so we recommend formally ending the one year report.
Make a motion, we accept agenda item number 19 as presented.
Motion by Mr. Donaldson, we accept number 19 as presented. Second by Ms. Fox, this motion is debatable, amendable, requires a majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor accepting number 19 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and will accept item number 19 as presented. Number 20 on your agenda, consideration of possible action on a resolution by the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, authorizing the publication of a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, authorizing the preparation of a preliminary official statement and notice of sale, and providing for other matters incidental thereto. Mr. Walker?
I'm not even listening, I'm breathing still.
Item number 20 on the agenda.
Oh, yes, okay, I'm with you now.
She could go to the restroom.
This is just to put out publications and, and do all that for bonds, it's just the process, so you're just taking action to authorize that advertising part of it.
Advertising where, are we advertising in the, the Conro Courier?
It is required in the paper.
Yes, yes, yeah, so it'll be in the Courier and on your website.
Okay.
And, so, to issue your certificates of obligation, you have to publish notice of your intent to issue your. your intent to issue your certificates of obligation for at least 45 days before you actually issue them, so the plan is to come back to you at your second meeting in January, where you would actually issue the certificates. But again, this gives the public an opportunity to know what's happening and to potentially file a protest.
We have a quorum, if you want to move forward, council.
Make a motion, we accept the agenda item number 20 as presented.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, we accept item number 20 as presented. Seconded by Ms. Fox, this motion's debatable, amendable, requires a majority vote, all those in favor accepting item number 20 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Did you say aye?
I didn't.
We don't have a full quorum vote, so we're waiting, Mr. Wilson's not sure if he's a gay or a nay.
I'm just reading.
Just for info, when they do bring it back, you'll have, you know, all the details on where those fall in, this is just the legal part of it for advertising it out to the public.
Okay, because I was trying to get, like...
Yeah, this is the early part, we've got to wait 45 days, the investment advisor will come back, and then, you know, we'll see, you know, possibly what we can, what the rate is on the sale of those bonds.
You'll actually receive proposals and have proposed interest rates, and James will be here with complete that sort of schedule, so you can see what the impact is.
Okay.
So, Ms. Langley, there's a motion and a second to accept item number 20 as presented. We've taken vote, and there are two votes, ye, outstanding vote is you and Mr. Olson.
Ye.
Mr. Olson's ye. It's just beginning the vote for the certificates of obligation, just, it's the launch of it saying yes, and then we'll go into detail of its later date in January. Okay, all right, that's four ye, so this motion has passed, we will accept item number 20 as presented. Number 21, consideration of possible action on the acceptance of a utility and economic feasibility study on the Crawfish Kai development, development number 2509.
Great, again, another feasibility study, and I will simply cover it online, but even on the last one, we'll stick to the site specific on this one. So when you look at the exhibit A, which is the first attachment to the study, you'll see a very rough conceptual layout plan that they provided, so what this is for is this is the property behind the future city home for a restaurant space, this is the relocation of Crawfish Kai to this location, that they're proposing building, parking, and outdoor seating area, ultimate. We go to the next exhibit, following that exhibit B, you'll see the water and sewer points, so water two, this development will come off a clipper, they will pour in rain and whatever pattern it's needed. Sewer will be a little bit different, they have two options, and it's going to be based on the ultimate site layout. One, if they want to try by gravity, they can run toward the back and get over to Berken Foring Connection, which is what was previously looked at when this was a tiny home rental community. However, with this being a single unit, it might be more efficient for them to do a small private grinder pump station, and pump two to be manhole, it's part of their property. Both are valid options, it just kind of depends on their long-term plans for the site, on which way to be managed, but either way, it can work.
How does that decide, Chris?
That'll be up to during their, their design, so when they submit plans, they will submit one or the other. We have presented above options, they have been presented this report, so they'll make that as a decision, if they want to put in a private grinder pump to maintain it, or spend extra money for a gravity sewer system that doesn't have a policy, ultimately doesn't change the city's responsibility, because it's...
I mean, they get a lot of slope, they do.
They do, and that's, that's kind of the part, it's like, it's just, you know, do they want to get the additional cost? As far as, we talked about the connection points, let me talk about the, so a couple things regarding the site, so one, the site was already plotted with the, you know, with my development, which is true, and also, you remember, for those who were in council at the time, they received a special use permit, they, council decided not to rezone this property, so it's still zoned R1 residential. So in order for this development to come in, they will have to request either the rezone or a special use permit to the restaurant within the R1 zone of the property.
If they do the permit, don't those expire?
They do, and so the last permit was tied to the development, not to the property.
The development didn't go through, it expired, because we didn't want, they didn't want to turn it into commercial, and then he sell it, and then the gas station go there.
Exactly.
So that's why it's tied, we tied it, if he sold...
So do we have a preference?
I mean, it's...
I mean, can we have a preference, I guess it's a...
You can, I mean, council can always, in Z, deny a rezone and require a special use permit, to, in order to operate a business within a R1 residential zone, you can do that. As far as a preference, probably...
Julie says no.
In an R1 zoning district, you can't use a special use permit to, to go against what your R1 zoning requires. R1 requires residential only, you can't use a special use permit to go against your zoning.
We'll rezone it on, on the basis, with, 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 with the exception of, oh, I don't know.
We can rezone it.
Well, we could rezone it like that, but then he could just sell it off.
Right, zoning, what's a zoning?
We can make it, we can make it, if he decides to sell it after he gets it done, we can make it end, to change his hands, ownership hands.
Well, that's why...
So it's like contingent, too.
Contingency.
Yeah.
So it would be not, after they constructed.
No, before, so what if we approve it to be commercial, and then he decides, hey, I can probably get a million dollars for this instead of the, whatever I paid for it, and then, just making sure to go back to R1 versus commercial, if he were, if the, if today's owner has it, and he gets granted commercial, if he decides to sell it in 90 days, that the commercial expires and it goes back to original zoning of R1. We were, we were told we could do that, I believe, before, like, the zoning goes with the owner, not the land, no?
That's a special use. I think we could do that, but that's, that's, that's for...
Now, it goes with the land.
Right.
Yeah.
In those situations where you have a special use permit, that can be...
But R1 doesn't allow for a special use permit, so therefore, we would either have to rezone it and be done, or leave it at R1.
It's not that R1 doesn't allow for a special use permit, you, you can't change the laws of your zoning district and jump it by using a special use permit.
Okay.
A special use permit is just a special use for, a use that's allowed in that zoning district, but there's special conditions that are required in that, in that zoning district. So you have a residential zoning district, and you have home occupancy, you use a special use permit for that home occupancy, because now you place special conditions on that home occupancy. You can have a home, a, not home occupancy, a home business, I'm sorry, a home business in a residential use, like a real estate office, that's where you can apply a special use permit, but to use a special use permit to jump from a residential use to a business use, just for that specific property, is not permitted. It's not, that's not what the, a special use permit is used for, you have to actually rezone. When you rezone, there are very few conditions that you can place on, sort of, rezone.
But what we could do is pick a zoning, we could zone it to a way where we are forced to use a special use permit, right?
If, in your ordinance, you zone it as commercial, and let's say that they assign a business there that is allowed in that zoning district, unless yours only ordinance already says that that specific use requires a special use permit, you, you can't just require a special use permit because...
Right, that's under commercial, but what, we have other zones, we have other categories that we could zone it, that would allow a special use permit? I mean, we just got done with the blue section that you can do anything in, so don't take your head, right?
I don't know that, that council can just create a PB zone for one project, that would be unfair to everyone. A single property. We have, we have a residential zoning district, we have a residential R2, which would allow for something more than a single-family home, we have the B commercial, we have the institutional, and we have the industrial, and that's all we have for a zoning district. I don't know that you want to put industrial there, that would be considered spot zombie, because you don't have any other industrial around that property, anywhere near that property. You can put business there, because you do have other businesses, maybe a co-spot, but...
The reason I, I'm, I'm hesitant, because we have residential right next to it, right? And, and the last thing I want is something commercial there that just absolutely rules that, and then also, there are going to be our neighbor, right? So we also wanted to make sure we have our business behind us, that it's...
The neighbor has been very agreeable, to say, I mean, they're very, so, so that portion is...
Can't you do the feasibility study without having it zoned?
Can we do the feasibility study? Typically, we do a feasibility study before, zoning variance is a section before, because it's more based on...
At this point, you just have to prove that...
Right, it's more based on utility.
That other thing is going to be...
Yeah, that doesn't go away, acceptance of the study doesn't change any rules or requirements, specifically for this, you know, if you have a residential zone next to the purpose zone, all buffers and everything is still applied, none of that.
So by approving, by approving that economic feasibility study has no bearing on...
Still conceptual.
Correct.
I think that we accept item 21 as presented.
Ms. Fox made a motion that we accept item number 21 as presented. Seconded by Ms. Langley, all those in favor accepting item 21 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we'll accept item 21 as presented. 22 on your agenda, consideration of possible action authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding, MOU, on proposed Old Plantersville Road improvements.
All right, this on the front of you tonight is part of the Briarly development, so if you remember back from the development in Britain, it cosigned in a three-party agreement between the county, the city, and the developer to do improvements of Old Plantersville. So we had a meeting, developer, staff, myself, met with the commissioner before Thanksgiving to talk through the terms of this MOU that's in front of you tonight. They are in the process of reviewing, we reviewed, staff has reviewed, the comments in front of you are just red lines, they're relatively minor. The developer here is here to answer any questions, but I'll run through the high points of what you're going to put out. So in our meeting with the county, the county expressed that their intent of the improvement of Old Plantersville Road goes from Old Dock, Plantersville, all the way to 105, so that includes a section through the city, right here outside of city home. For the section, generally, south of the railroad tracks, that will be widened, because they have additional right of way to do it. Obviously, once you get north of the road tracks, the right of way is, there is no more room, so they will just retop, repave this section out here.
Widened with a turn lane, or widened just with a bigger shoulder?
So it's combo. So the developer is responsible for installing turn lanes at their cost, the county is going to widen the overall cross-section of the road to add full width lanes for West River today, plus shoulder.
Okay.
Good.
Yep.
So that was the first red line on here, just clarifying that, so again, developer's not responsible for the rest of the roadway improvements, but this is a three-party agreement, so we wanted to memorialize what the county's intent is on the entirety of the project. The rest of it, so it lays out the developer's going to install the turn lanes, it lays out that the county is going to have designed and ready for, to go forward with construction by May of '26, the roadway improvements, and then proceed with construction and have the construction complete by May of 2027 for those roadway improvements. My understanding from the county is that they have funds set aside available for this project. Moving on to the second page of the agreement, this is all pre-standard language, again, talks about authority to review plans, one of the red lines that we have on the item B is that the city also has an option to review its plans, et cetera, as it is going through an impact in the city. It talks about video requirements, which are our standard for public entities, the district listed in here is the municipal utility district over the Briarly development, so it's three public entities entering the agreement, and those are kind of the main points, so again, this is memorandum of understanding, with the intent of setting the terms of the agreement, that'll ultimately turn into a full three-party, fully executed agreement. All right, so, which, Alan or Johnson are here to answer for questions, or the developer can go ahead. Let me, let me clarify, because I did not say this, part of this agreement is the county completes the road widening, and the city within annex takes over future maintenance afterwards. So that was part of that agreement, that's a key point, which I did not mention, is that county does the upfront, does the widening, the repaving, the district does the turn lanes, once it is all put in and accepted, then the intent of the three-party agreement is that the city would take on future maintenance of the newly constructed road.
Question on the map, the green is the roads in front of us, what is happening with that county project, so the county's going to come in and widen that portion of Old Plantersville?
So they're not going to widen, so the county's not proposing to acquire any additional right of way as part of the project, therefore, just based on size, they'll just be doing a mill overlay, fix the base where it needs to rebuild the road, but then it's existing configuration for the county, of course.
So then my next question is, the county does that, in the development agreement for the development north of this Briarly, they were, that development agreement is omitted for them to have any kind of responsibility for the roads, so county comes in and does it, they start building, they, the roads get torn up, that's going to be on us to get it remediated?
So, to answer your question, yes, if it's damaged the city roads, unless you're, you know, monitoring and can put the damage tied to them, again, this will be more of a legal question, you can go after for damages, is my understanding, but, you know, if they tear up the road, then that would be part of, it would be a symmetry, and it currently is the section through the city that's currently a symmetry.
So this piece that the county is going to rebuild, obviously, currently it's under county, do we have any say in how it's built, because we have to take it?
So that was one of the situations we put into the agreement, was that both, or all three parties have a right to review design bids, contractors, et cetera.
Okay, because we don't want...
Right, at least. Yeah, if they own, you know, but one inch fast, one inch space, that doesn't...
If you enter into another development agreement, and I know what you're talking about, you need to protect that from that situation, which is doable, because there's another...
Hopefully, we have staff that looks at things like that and makes sure that that's never admitted again.
Well, we didn't know, the county wanted us to take over that road.
But even whether they took it over or not, being the fact that we're asking Johnson Development to redo the whole entire road, and then another developer comes in, and they've got zero responsibility for the road, they just...
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, that's, that piece, that's, that's the piece I'm concerned with. Absolutely disgusting, really, but anyway, I'll hold my other comments. Okay.
We'll make a motion to accept item number 22.
Motion by Mr. Olson, accept item number 22 as presented. Seconded by Ms. Fox, all those in favor accepting item 22 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, we'll accept item 22 as presented. 23 on the agenda, consideration of possible action regarding authorizing the city engineer to begin design of Phase Two of the... to begin design of Phase Two of the Buffalo Springs Drive and C.B. Stewart roadway reconstruction project, the project, subject to receipt and deposit from BCS Capital Group. Development number 2415.
Correct. So this is sitting in front of y'all, those emailed out earlier today as well. Apology for delay on this. We didn't get city engineer's results till last week. Get the recommendations all together. And so what is in front of you, just I'm not going to go through all the words in here. The whole pack coming, a couple hundred things off. Definitely not going to take that. So the, if you remember, part of the BCS agreement was to improve roadways at C.B. Stewart and Buffalo Springs. So they put up initial money to do a geotech report, and this analysis in front of you today is saying what are the ultimate recommendations, because there's a lot of things in flux between first feasibility study, feasibility amendment, development agreement. To this point today, there's been a lot of moving pieces with this development. That has been completed, and that's what's in front of you. So they completed a traffic impact analysis, which on the document that was emailed out, that is part of, there's cash in there. We threw their deposit, completed a geotechnical analysis to come up with payment recommendations, also evaluating the existing pavement, and this is the suffering of all. So as you know, Buffalo Springs currently concrete ends at the north side of Longview. And the intent of the development agreement was that they continually pass their boundary to fit in concrete, widen it so it's the full width to allow for turn lanes, et cetera. The C.B. Stewart, obviously, is also in very poor condition. There's a ton of cracking, a ton of damage to C.B. Stewart. In fact, this when we had the cores done on the road, they found anywhere from an inch and a half to two inches of asphalt and seven to 10 inches of base. The recommended by the geotech is three and a half inches of asphalt and at least 12 inches of base on top of it somewhere. So there's, there is lacking there the original construction of the road, as well as the road is losing. There's 26-foot wide, you know, city's handling 28-foot wide roads, that's also of concern. And then we list out these intersections. So again, through the feasibility studies, just reminded, first feasibility study did include the six acres on the northeast corner of C.B. Stewart, 105. So the improvements were really based off what they were adjacent to, which is North of Clepper in Buffalo Springs. Second, they did the feasibility study amendment. I'm on page three of that report, which included the six acres. But at the time, there was an understanding, as well, we get to development agreement, that they were going to force all traffic south on the C.B. Stewart out of the retail center, which is why the recommendation is do the south portion and do all Buffalo Springs. Traffic impact analysis came back, and they have an even 50-50 distribution, building north and south on C.B. Stewart. They have also, the impact analysis warranted a signal at C.B. Stewart and 105, based on this development. So the, what was in here is obviously that, you know, the agreement says, based on the findings of the CIA and geodeck, the scope is subject to change. So ultimately, what our recommendation is, and you'll see that exhibit following on page four, and then there's a full, full side of the pack, because there's a lot more detail, is to complete all of C.B. Stewart from 105 to Buffalo Springs. Complete Buffalo Springs through the intersection of C.B. Stewart, so all that becomes concrete. We did price out asphalt due to the required depth of the base, it was significantly expensive, so concrete made a whole lot more sense. Widen C.B. Stewart to a hole of 28 feet where it's not, so you actually have two full length widths on C.B. Stewart. Buffalo Springs remain the same. They also was included in these estimates and costs is additional driveways and culverts to accommodate their site. That wasn't included in the initial feasibility, just based on timing, it makes more sense to do on 10 feet, close and back and forth. As well as they have additional modifications to Buffalo Springs there where the median is installed today in order to create a turn lane ending the site. So all that's included in the cost. What has been removed from the cost is the roundabout. So again, this is, it brought you as preliminary draft for discussion. But going, when we look at the total cost of the improvements to get all of C.B. Stewart completed, as well as the concrete renovation came in a little bit high, took a little bit thicker concrete. The total cost without the roundabout is roughly the same as with the roundabout to do all of C.B. Stewart, all of Buffalo Springs. One of our thought processes is that when the development on the east side of Buffalo Springs, the ramping property develops, that's going to be a major intersection. And if there's a roundabout or something that is desired, that could be part of that development. Let's get the roadways complete as much as we can, let's get the concrete in on C.B. Stewart, Buffalo Springs, and take care of everything we have, and then delay all roundabout. It's preliminary.
Would we be able to get the developer at the time to be able to assist in that roundabout?
To me, it would be no different than than this development. I think when you're looking at that development, you are still all depending on timing and agreements. But you still have a section from roughly C.B. Stewart to Longstar Parkway to complete the paving of that will need to get completed, as well as, you know, intersection improvements. Again, if you're putting the the long-term kind of concept around this is that this C.B. Stewart could potentially connect to Longstar, work its way up around, and so you have all the way through. So that would be a lot of traffic on that road, so intersection improvements would likely be required and the scope of that in a continued term. But that could definitely be part of the development agreement, just like you said. Overall, the, come on page six of what's in front of you, it goes through the primary factors to our recommendation, the the traffic loading, the signal improvements, which the developer has stated today will be responsible for working with TechStop to design and install that signal. And the total estimated cost of the project comes out to roughly 3.18 million. Of that, about 275,000 is all the additional driveways and turn lanes, stuff that's being requested to be added to the scope. All the rest is, a lot of attachments, a detailed cost estimate, a full exhibit, followed by a client memo from us for completing the design work, bidding, et cetera. So we have sent this to the developer. We had a call with them last Thursday. We went over the recommendations of the scope and the cost. We sent them the report, and they have, they agreed with the findings, agreed with the scope that's in there. And they are ready to work according to the verbal, I don't have that right in the verbal. So steps here for the development agreement. Once the stage one is done, they're responsible for, they have additional deposit to cover their design, and then it's bid with every other project, and then they're responsible for the cost of contract. And estimated timeline from start to finish is roughly 355 days between design, bidding, contracts, and about seven months of construction. Do you have the phase out to try to keep the road?
Excuse me.
So they're saying we need another red light. On 105.
Correct.
A block from the other red light.
Correct. So there and Jonathan, if you want to jump in.
So just because it's recommended doesn't mean.
And then there'll be one at Flagship.
So it's, so they have to submit to TechStop.
Because I'd rather they didn't.
Right. So they have to submit to TechStop. TechStop is obviously accepting the traffic, and they will warrant.
Yeah, so we did submit our driveways to TechStop, knowing that they were going to require a traffic impact analysis. We submitted without it at first, get the traffic impact analysis, which the city was required anyways. I think there's four triggers typically for the warrants on these signals, we trigger three of them. So TechStop, once they receive this traffic, they will require it, so it will be put in.
Could be 10 lights in a four-mile stretch.
I was trying to pull up those triggers.
Yeah, I mean, there was no reasonable, we pushed for the Buffalo Springs one instead of his dual purpose, right? Both sides.
We also have to make some small signal improvements on the current one, just for timing, so they can actually be timed correctly. So they'll actually mark together, so you won't pick one. The group can go to the next one, and they.
Do we have any saying?
Can we say we don't want it?
But you can, just like you did a letter of support, we can do a letter of objective. Correct. You can definitely voice your opinion.
As far as we had to work to get the one that we wanted, they shouldn't have any problems denying one, we don't know.
Four hour via the volume speak hour and eight hour, the particular volume, all of those.
With the lack of infrastructure here, and when you have two high schools used in one stadium, this town gets locked up as it is. And then having, I don't know, up at 2854, six lights to go through? It's just.
Anyways.
It's okay.
So is this action?
We just need the action for the engineer to start engineering, design.
Correct.
Make a motion to accept item number 23.
Motion by Mr. Olson, accept item number 23. Seconded by Ms. Langley. All those in favor accepting item number 23, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. We'll accept item 23 as presented. Twenty-four on your agenda. Consideration of possible action authorizing the execution of the maintenance and license agreement for the proposed brick pavers within the legacy Grove Development. Development number 2409.
This should be pretty simple. So as you remember, Riley, they are installing pavers on the entrance. Part of their agreements, they're responsible for the pavers, not the city, even though it's a city right of way. This is the exact same thing. They want to improve the entrance that says, pavers are your responsibility, not the city's. And just memorialize the terms.
Make a motion to accept item number 24 as presented.
Question by Mr. Olson, seconded by Mr. Donaldson. We accept number item 24 as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. We'll accept item 24 as presented. Ms. Duckett is running up here. Departmental reports. Item number 25, municipal report, November 2025. Ms. Duckett?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. citations from municipal report for November were 155, and collections was 36,473 dollars and 34 cents. Are there any questions in this quarter? Thank y'all, have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. All right, next item, number 26, November 2025, police department report, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. You have a report before you, and you have any questions?
Parade this Saturday?
Yes, ma'am.
What time will the streets be?
We will start checking the seats down. Parade starts at 9:45. So we'll shut the streets down by 10 o'clock. 10 o'clock, we should be trying to close every street now. So by 10 o'clock, we want the first, we want the first flow crossing 105.
Can I go out and around?
Yeah, you can.
You don't.
And if you can't, give it a call.
Unless port me out.
Next up, October 2025, development services report.
This Tilly, Lord have mercy, she got a tree in her hand.
Thank you. Okay, we have Mark in front of you. I don't know if you have any questions, but I do want to respond for a couple of items. Sorry. So the issue earlier with the open cover form down in College Street, just wanted to let you know about this. I had, we had six properties on College Street that you could go through the PNC for review. The misunderstanding is that you have a PNC review because of the design. That's design only. That has nothing to do with the construction of the building. So that is a separate review process that goes through the building official, and it has some building code standards. So that's why there were permits that were required after the PNC had already approved the design guidelines for the project. So I had reviewed six other projects. Like I said, they went through PNC. They did get their building permits. Some of them did not require a building permit, some of them did. The ones that did require a building permit either had nothing to do with the front porch with spindles or handrails. It was a swimming pool, I think two or three of them were swimming pools, fences. It it were, they were building permits issued, but they didn't require, where the building official was required to look at existing porches and existing handrails or existing steps. The specific one that came up here earlier was that it had to be, they did redo the porch and the steps, so that's why the building code did get applied, and that's why the requirements were applied at that time, for a specific property. So I'd like to clarify that. Thank you. Montgomery, typically, the code enforcement officer does not enforce a development agreement. Your requiring trees in each of the properties, I'll review it as part of development services. Do the inspection for that, but not as a code enforcement officer.
So not as code enforcement, but as our so, as our, as our zoning.
Planning.
So the planning and zoning person, that that didn't enforce that, right?
Planning and development, right? Because it isn't in the zoning ordinance, it's in the subdivision ordinance where landscaping was required, but it isn't specific to, each home has to have two, two trees, one in front, one in the back. This was specific to the development agreement, correct? The one in the front and one in the back. It's not required.
Specifically, the one in the front, one in the back, at least the time of the agreement was part of the the ordinance. With new single family lots have to have one tree of a certain caliber in the front, two trees on the property, at least one ahead of the front. So this is part of the tree ordinance at the time.
Yes. So I'll just be reviewing it as a part of development services.
So as, since it was part of the ordinance, it's not part of the code?
It was a part of the ordinance back then.
Yeah, which applies.
Back then, but that expired, right?
No, not, not, because the development agreement is going to enforce that ordinance then. So that ordinance for that development agreement is what is guiding the development agreement. So it isn't ordinance.
Okay.
I mean, otherwise, we wouldn't have anything to enforce in the development agreement.
Well.
When we issue the development agreement.
Things that are required in the development agreement that your, that your builder is required to follow. It does not always mean that it was in the ordinance that they have to follow that.
Right, but this one was, right, this one was, right?
Correct, yeah. This, this is part of the the tree ordinance at the time. Obviously, it was, there was a change early this year.
Right.
When this property was plotted, developed, et cetera, it was part of the tree ordinance.
So it was part of our, our ordinance is at that time, which the development agreement is going to hold us to.
Yes.
Yes.
So.
So question, the individual that was on College Street that had the questions, comments, or feedback about the permit, has this conversation been explained, or will that be happening after this meeting?
It's been explained in emails.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But I can explain it again.
Okay.
And the building official had also explained it too.
I just don't like the message that's being said. Are we understanding things differently, maybe? Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where the disconnect is.
I can try and explain it again, the differences between the reviews.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Building official report, Rick Hannah, for October 2025.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I've got my report. We've been busy. Any questions?
Somebody yelled, even called me about it. I don't remember, but anyway. You're a piece of value, aren't you, and I, okay. Somebody was mad at you, called me, but I can't remember what it was about. No big deal. I know you're doing a job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 29, Public Works Monthly Report, October 2025. I know, I know. I was like, he's doing his job.
All right. If the board in front of you, you have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Utility operations report, October 2025.
Same thing. I've got a report in front of you. Questions?
So glad to hear that. Just want to call you some accountability this week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Alright, engineers monthly report, number thirty-one.
I'm just gonna hit top five. Already taken up two hours. Here's the highlights. Water plant number two, earlier days, it was a piece of your approvals, that plant is now back building off online, including the bleach converted, which was the last thing that we were waiting on. The College Street drainage project that is starting this week will be done before Christmas. Door hangers have been up yesterday. We've had a couple of calls from residents, et cetera, so we're talking through with them as it comes up. The.
Did the resident at the very end?
Be happy.
Call anybody? Cause.
Yes.
He stopped by yesterday and told me that he didn't know what was going on.
He gave me a call on Saturday and called him back. I'm not sure if that's okay.
Thank you.
On page seven, ten ninety-seven of Buffalo Springs, Texas, has started construction of that traffic signal. Some of the underground work, the formwork for the control box, it's there, which was good to see. The M L K, on page eight of our report, M L K drainage are privileged by the county. That work is complete and culvert. They also are doing roadway permits all the way from one forty-nine to ten ninety-seven. They have a contractor selected. They're just waiting on them to finish up another project and he's expecting to move on site. Q one, they didn't have an exact date and be complete within two months.
So that M O U is completed and done?
There is no M O U yet. So he just bought his list, it's funded, and he's, he's going. And those are the main items. There's a lot in my report, but I think that's enough.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
Between you or staff, who found out that Ken DeKeese moved their proposal from November to March? How do we find out that information?
I don't know what you mean exactly.
Well, they're due, they're due to report in March. It'll be two years. And they're due to finish the second phase of their report.
Yeah, and they're pretty much caught up now and they're scheduling to come in. I told them to wait until after the holidays, but yes, they are coming here. Is that what you're asking? It's when they're coming to give a full report. During the time that you had transition and, you know, leadership change and all that, they had no real communication to tell them what to do, but I believe we're on track again. The U D Os are starting to, to look correct and we're going in and, you know, reviewing that as they do.
Let me ask this. On the website, it says the city's G I S online portal is super unconsolidated. Will they fill that part of that?
It's really these guys right here.
It's there and it's active. It's just the link on the website. So we've been working with that, but your G I S system is fully operational.
Yeah, it refers to something else.
Yeah, yeah, we'll follow that up with staff and make that like corrective as it is active and accessible to the public.
And as we continue to get the new website and everything going, we're hopefully improving all of that.
What's the ETA on that? We should have you on this. We need a departmental report so we can get all this from you.
I don't have a department.
I'm pretty sure the whole city is your department.
Don't you have it? You were doing it.
Yes, I just answered preliminary questions this last week, so we're about to start scheduling conversations.
Meaning we're going to go with a different company and just scratch everything out and go?
We're upgrading with the same company. We do a different platform.
Okay.
So I have two questions for you, Chris. One is, in past years, we've done a capital projects budget. And we've seen all of our projects laid out. This year's projected cost, next year's projected cost, all and all, you know, and so on and so forth. Do we plan on having one of those?
We are ready for that conversation. We keep that capital plan pretty well up to date. So if we want to schedule a workshop for that, or we can bring it in the next council meeting and at least present it, go over the highlights and let y'all come back with questions. So hopefully y'all.
But do you prefer a workshop or just in normal council?
Depends on how long they're at the G I S.
I think going forward, we need to add that into the budget part of the, it really should be there. Because you're looking at that capital outlay, you're renewing your five-year plan. It's all part of the budget because you, you know, as you start doing more streets, going back over the streets, you've got to have all of that in there and that's going to set your budget every year.
It used to be in there. We used to do that as part of our budget and then when, I believe when, Mary.
I'd be happy to address it if you'd like me to.
You moved it out and said, no, that's not part of the budget. That is capital. And I totally understand the separation.
So what was happening is that y'all were budgeting your capital budget like an operating budget. And your capital budget is not an operating budget, right? And so it is a multi-year plan. And that's why we have been doing the workshops, the capital project workshops. But it's not, it's not held in your operating budget document, right? So that's a part of why we're doing this debt issuance, is to fund your capital project plan. So I agree with, with Brent in the fact that we need to be including that in our regular budget process. It just, we, I came in right as budget was happening and then we've just, it's just been a cycle we've been trying to catch up to. But you won't see it budgeted like the operating budget, because it's not a proper operating budget. But we do need to, and we did that this last year where we had the workshop and looked at, you know, the, like, kind of your schedule of the projects that were coming, our different tiers, and that's why we're talking about the additional funding.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
And really, your comprehensive plan should continue to follow whatever your five-year plan is and both of them need to be looked at together.
So that's, that's kind of why I'd like to see something put together again, so we kind of know where we're at. I know we're going out asking for funding, but I don't know. Then the other question lies on, and Stan will like this question. The ARPA funds, I know we went back and forth and this is part of that capital project thing. Did we ever budget the bleach conversions everywhere or?
Not with them, and so the introduction of that.
No.
So bleach, the ARPA funds are used for booster pump three in College Street. The, so the two plants, bleach conversion is now complete at this point. It's a little bit more complicated than the other larger plant, and then the new plant going in is automatically designed with bleach. So if there is a dot, it is on the capital plan that is not earmarked from a certain spot in that last conversion.
And the reason to get through in on this one, on the cuff, was because it was actually cheaper than replacing all the chlorine gas equipment that needed replacement.
If we're going in new, we want to go with the bleach conversion. I just was trying to figure out what that would cost to finish. And I know we had numbers on it, but.
Yeah, we can relook and update those. The water pump three, you just, you don't have a spot to put it, so it's the structure to some of that equipment that's driving that cost. We can update, give y'all an update when we do the whole capital panel.
Yeah, the old numbers were two hundred thousand per piece. They were well, they were old. Two years.
Anything else for me?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thirty-two, financial report for the period ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Does anybody have any questions on the first quarter? I did want to point out if you look at page two ninety-four of your packet, the mayor had come and asked some questions about sales tax and was wondering about seeing the sales tax data and I just reminded her it is a part of your packet monthly. And so I'm just pointing that out to you. The sales tax, sales tax portion starts on page nine, two ninety-four of this packet. It will, you've been getting this ever since we brought H D L onboard. If you have questions about anything you're seeing here, I'm happy to go over them. It does give you some of the information that you were used to seeing under the old source that we had that handled the sales tax. So on this snapshot page, you have your top ten taxpayers. You know, that's always of interest. And if you look on page two ninety-seven, it goes into a little bit more detail with your top three companies. So you've got one through ten and then eleven through thirty. The thing to remember is that sales tax data, the granular detail is confidential, because these are for proper businesses. So we get this information kind of as a lump and you can see it that way, but it's not, the information that we can publicly present is not based on each individual taxpayer. So if you ever have any other questions, we do get that data in-house, that confidential data in-house. And it is something that we look at. We look at a variety of reports from, from H D L every month to track sales tax. So if you ever have any questions, feel free to reach out. Happy to help with that. The only other thing I wanted to just touch on is the last page in your packet, which is the utility general fund report. I went back to look at utility service accounts. In October of twenty twenty-four, we have eleven hundred and forty-nine accounts. October of twenty twenty-five, we have thirteen hundred and forty-three accounts. That's almost a seventeen percent increase in one year. Hundred and ninety-four additional utility accounts have been added in that year. So, just another measure of growth.
The hundred and twenty day plus is over twenty-four thousand dollars. We had done a very good job of being very diligent in getting that down. How has that jumped up so high?
I'll have to look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll look at that and see whether or not I have that.
It was high at one point and we worked really hard at getting that down.
We will take a look at it.
Good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Make a motion, we accept a far bigger report.
Mister Donaldson, we accept the departmental report as presented. Ms. Lanley seconded that. All those in favor, say aye. I was supposed to say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. We will accept department reports as presented. It is executive session thirty-three, closed session. City council will meet in closed session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in. A, section five five one dot oh seven four, personnel matter, city administrator review. B, section five five one dot oh seven one, consultation with attorney, update on Town Creek litigation. It is eight forty-two P M and we will head into executive session. Thank you all for coming.
Really, really?
I'm not listening anymore.
Over it.
Look at only, only the officer guy stayed. He's like, oh my god.
Here's 4:30.
Are you a day?
Sarah?
I think I'm dead.
They shipped out of the year.
There's nothing here. No action. They don't need that.
Nope. All right, so we're standing. Okay, hold on one more. It's 10:02. You're not getting an open session. Is there any action to take?
No action.
Okay, how about counseling query?
Have any query?
Yep. Okay, well, that's next. So the closing agenda items for to consider placement on future agendas.
So do you want to do the, the community building as a, how do you want to do this? So you want, you want to go over there a few of you or make it part of the?
Well, I don't need to go. I know what I want to do with it.
Stick with your guns, Casey. Stick with your guns, baby. I'll go with you.
So, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that.
It depends on when you're going.
Hey, I've got something for Anna speaking.
Are you busy?
Yeah.
Retirement.
All right. I wear my pajamas all day. Now, don't be telling me I have to go somewhere.
So, so Brett, you'll organize it for us?
Yes, ma'am.
And you'll have all, you'll have all the?
Do you want to wait?
Huh?
You want to wait till like after Christmas or you want to do it in the next few days or?
I guess it's good.
Okay.
Oh, Brett, I do have a question. There was a, there was a statement made this evening in open forum or citizens forum. The WGA, they police themselves and they double check. The only project I know that they're on both sides of the table, I think, is the church. And there's a different team doing that. Is that right? Is that the only project? Okay.
I thought about that too. I heard that. Well, there's, there's maybe two projects. The church and something else.
Because I know we talked about, it was, it was brought up when the church was using WGA. There was a heavy conversation about it and everybody agreed that that was okay because they were separate. Okay.
And I think there's one more.
But they're checking their own company's work.
Brett, did you understand that Tom?
Oh, no.
It was, he, but he's, he says he can't stand very well and he can't speak very well right now.
Yeah, I just heard a part of it, but I didn't hear exactly what.
But, well, that's, he just sent me, he had just got out of ICU at one hour about 11 today. So, that's all I know.
Okay, what else? All right. We're through.
What else? Whatever you.
We're through.
You're on vacation now.
All right, 36 adjourned. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute. Yes, I do. I know it's minor, but I'm still going to, back in January, no, July, I asked to take this capital improvement advisory committee and transportation advisory committee. I don't want them on the website because we, one of them, we hadn't even, never met, nobody's, he's taking us places.
Do you want it in front of council to just disband them?
Hey, this is yours.
No, it's not. I have it here.
I don't even know, you know, we, 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 we have meetings and basically what the transportation advisory committee ended up doing is helping us get, keep in touch with Tex-.
And that's coming and you're all invited to that. Did you guys get all that from Tex- Doc? That meeting coming?
Yeah.
The annual?
They're coming to us over since.
Sam, that was really when they were trying to put the, the medians here and there were some big issues going on. I think we're at a different spot with them now because we were able to get that curtailed. But, and I guess when there's something big coming on, which you should be able to tell us, hey, they're proposing this, here's what's in the future, that's when we can still be formed together and then come together and do it if that's what we want to do. I don't think it makes sense to have a different committee every time that there's a project. And it might be two years between, I don't know. But I think, because, I mean, I think it's the mayor and the council and whoever else, like just the titles to be there and whoever's in those seats are the people that should be present whenever there is big projects.
And that gave you the, if you can't come to city hall when they come for their annual, you can watch it on video too, so.
We don't need the committees, that's my point.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree. You can always reform it if you get some kind of a big project that you need somebody to play my kind of suggestion.
Well, that's, but, but I'm also saying like MIST is important to have there. Like there were some people important to have there that we don't typically have at our normal meetings. So that's why I'm like, don't disband it. Use the same, use the same list to send people when there's something.
I think of a suggestion, y'all.
Unless.
Well, we think it's terrible, Sam. Just kidding. Totally kidding.
Unless, unless you don't know who the, I mean, it's by title, but you don't know all the people on it. If you know all the people on it, I guess it's okay to keep it there.
Right, that's what I'm saying, by title, like, yeah. All right, there's been a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye. Aye. It is 10:08, bill adjourned. Well, there was, Cheryl did. I don't think everybody did it in unison.